Bring this council to a quarter. Stewart City Council tentative agenda Monday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, six P M. Council chambers. Order Morgan.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Billy.
Here.
Kirkpatrick is here. Agenda approval. And consent agenda approval of minutes of three one two thousand twenty-four and special meeting of three twenty-five two thousand twenty-four and special meeting of three twenty-five two thousand twenty-four. Approval of financial statement as of three thirty-one two thousand twenty-four. Approval of bills as presented. Moved by Cobble.
Second.
Second by Russell. How do you vote? Cobble.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Billy.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Forward. Two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five city proposed budget. Public hearing. I now open it up to a public hearing. Ash, did you receive any name?
No.
Close the public hearing. And B resolution number twenty-four dash zero nine C. Adoption of twenty twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five city budget. I'll motion make that motion. Moved by Billy.
Second.
Second by Cobble. How do you vote? Cobble.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Billy.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
All right, number five, street department, traffic control.
Yep.
I believe Sarah probably has a couple of ordinances in your packet to restrict traffic flow north-south on North Fremont Street at Northeast Fifth, making that a four-way stop instead of a two-way stop. Had several complaints from the neighborhood of very excessive speed because they can go from Third Street, Seventh Street with no stop. So recommending that as well as, well, I guess you probably need to do that once one.
Need a motion for this solution number twenty-four.
Does everybody know where that's at? Okay, moved by Cobble.
Second.
Second by Russell. How do you vote? Cobble.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Billy.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Means resolution number twenty-four dash twelve C. No parking destination Foley Street and All Saints Drive.
Okay, what we've got is there currently is no parking on the west side of Foley and on the east side of All Saints Drive. The problem is the side that is allowed to have parking, excuse me, there's no parking on the east side of Foley. And the west side you're allowed to park on, but with the development of the last lot paralleling White Pole Road, if people park there, which the construction companies have been a little bit, but with people parking there between the last driveway and the corner, somebody wanting to turn off of White Pole Road onto Foley Street or All Saints either one, if somebody's coming wanting to get on the highway, it kind of creates a bottleneck there because that car has nowhere to go. So I want to restrict parking for a hundred feet from the highway north. That's basically the first property line is where that falls, so there wouldn't be any parking from that point to the highway.
Okay. Motion. I'm with that too. Moved by Cobble. Second. Second by Kirkpatrick. How do you vote? Cobble.
Yep.
Russell.
Yes.
Billy.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, Menlo. Oh, I'm sorry, six. I was gonna skip you, Josh.
First off, you guys should have had some stuff in your packets as well. It kind of lacks on the monthly reports. It's been a very busy start to our year. I would say we're around thirty-four events so far this year. I mean, three months into it, so. Also, within your packets, I think it stated that the Guthrie County Community Foundation grant we received, that's seventy-five hundred dollars towards a seventeen thousand dollar, five hundred dollar project. One of the things on the agenda was the truck progress. I provided pictures for you guys. Can I show you the progress? Right now, they're kind of looking maybe beginning of June, mid-June delivery date. Therefore, the remaining balance of that truck would be due. I don't know. So then need approval for the officers for two thousand twenty-four. They are as followed, so everyone else knows. Myself as chief, Steven Martinson, assistant chief. First captain would be Shane Martinson, second captain Corey Geisinger, first lieutenant Jim Henderson, second lieutenant events long, our safety.
Need a motion proposed. Move by Cobble.
I'll second.
Thank you, Billy.
How do you vote? Cobble.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Billy.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go to Menlo American Legion Auxiliary Iowa Service Dogs fundraiser. How are you all?
I'm just coming to ask permission to use the walking track because we're not, it's not just Menlo doing it this time. It's going to be a combined of all Guthrie County Auxiliary units to raise money for the Iowa Service Dogs, and that's going to be September fourteenth. And we're also going to honor P O A, P O W M I As, which is Sunday, the fifteenth. So it'll be a combined raise of money for Iowa Service Dogs and to honor the P O Ws. And the Iowa Training Dogs for Veterans, they do it for police because they told us that the suicide rate for fire is almost as much as veterans. So we decided to go that route instead of Puppy Jake, since that way we can encompass more of the community members. And so I was just seeking permission to use the tracks.
My question is, I'm not familiar with this. What goes on that you walk?
Yes.
That's basically all it is.
We sell the T-shirts, which raises the money that we provide, that we will then give to, and we're trying to work with Carl Chevrolet and Lewis Place because we want to keep them centrally, you know, in our communities. And then, of course, like I said in the letter, we always clean up afterwards, and if anybody walks the dogs, they are responsible for cleaning up after their dogs. Walk their dogs because we've always opened that up because that's the whole point is to raise money for service dogs. And I think we're going to have somebody from the Iowa Service Dogs at the walk. But we want to keep it off because when we did it in Menlo, we walked on the streets, but with a bigger group, we want to keep it off the street, just for safety.
You kind of want just to reserve it for those.
Yeah, we just wanted, because we were told we had to ask permission, not just assume that it's available.
Need a motion moved by Cobble.
I'll second.
Seven by Billy.
How do you vote? Cobble.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Billy.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number eight, request to close street Johnny Staff.
Hello, I'm Audrey from Johnny's half up on Menlo Street, and I was just wanting to close off part of the street on July twentieth for Jeff and Randy Leonard's thirtieth anniversary. It's just going to be in front of the bar and down to the next bike, pulled down the way. We selected it so it wouldn't be in interfere with normal operations. Ruby needs to speak for the meeting. Everybody, one person said it was okay, so I figured I better make sure that it be all right. These are people from Dexter, they've been around Stewart, she works at J A C's clinic, he works for Kango. It's not a private party and will have the side box would be open on both sides, and anyone is welcome to attend if they want to come. And I just want them to be able to do it if it's possible.
So this is open to the public?
Yes, it would be open to the public. It'll be blocked off on all sides, but it's still be open. The fence that we normally have to have.
Okay, Jim.
Who's gonna block it off?
Just we're trapped.
With what?
The fencing like we do every time.
Okay, he gets that fencing from me, and he hasn't talked to me about it yet, so.
Well, it's not till July twentieth, so I'll buy fencing if we can borrow it.
I know in the fact you said you had one person or your entity, so in our packet there's an email with another one that has insurance with it also.
That she did have a concern if it's an email from today. Paige came in and talked to me, and she said she had no problem with it at all. She just needed more information, and that's not, I didn't know that.
Okay.
It's the one across the street.
And I don't think they're still on board, are they?
She's here.
I had an opportunity to visit with one of them here the other day, and their big concern is with it being a private event. And I don't get this, we just got discussed, so it's nothing personal, with it being a private event. And if we set a precedent by opening and letting one business do that, could another business like, say Dollar General walk down part of the street if they wanted to do something, you know, for somebody, you know, if any business walked down now, and their concern is, and I see it, is that when you close off a street, if I see a street closure, I'm not going down that street because I can't get through, you know? And people might not know that they could parking back. They might not drive around. I don't know, there's a lot, there's a lot of concern with that. You know, I think it's in the summer when with that business, that would be one of their peak times probably. I did see in the email, I thought you guys did talk about blocking off stuff in the back. Have you talked to anybody about doing that?
Not at all.
About your business and stuff? Because I know it's the email from Paige. I think business owners should be okay, but the alley in back is blocked off rather than the street. You know, that might be an effort to open stuff up, and that was a suggestion made to me by a person at the school also, was possibly that could happen. I don't know, you know, I don't know until people start talking, so.
Would that be an option for you, Audrey, to do it in the?
Or it's all rock back there. Locking on the rock.
How much fence do we have?
That plenty fence, that's not the point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying, what if we, what if we blocked off like the parking on the south side in plural ways? Just the south half of the road. I mean, you'd need to go out north on each side and then all the way across east-west. You know, I'm not, not the whole road, but I'm saying fifteen feet into the roads.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like you mean with a lane open.
Could, we could do that, yes, that'd be perfect.
So you got that option, then you're gonna have who's going to, you gotta make sure that it's very noticeable, the people coming to the east, they're sitting around the corner, and then if somebody wants to go out, then you're open that. So I understand the need to walk it off both ways, then you don't have people coming, but I don't know, that's just my two cents.
Well, I was gonna ask, fifteen feet, does that just, parking, that would be the parking section of the street?
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, if you were to put a truck, right, where the, where the buffer of the truck would go.
And they both lines, oh, okay. Well, that might be.
So you'd still have two-way traffic.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't know how you do it with one-way traffic.
No, that's, okay, I misunderstood what you said, so.
And I forgot, they're gonna have a band. So that would be trailer, like we always have for like Good Egg Days, yeah.
Audrey, have you, have you talked to the police chief and Jim?
Dave Rehaw, but I'm there that I have a sign with him.
But you didn't speak with Jim, who is it? Okay.
I didn't know I was supposed to. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we just kind of have the police chief and the public works director kind of port that out.
Oh, okay.
Most, you know, Jim does have the.
Those things are required on.
Yeah. Well, I guess we need to come up with a solution or something.
Well, if, if the councils will care with it, it will be subject to communicating with Jim and Dave Rehaw, and that would be the condition. If they care with it, so the removal will be subject to police chief and public work.
Sadie, do you have something to say, or do you have any comments, sorry?
If I could.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, see, I'm not here. Can you sit down, say hello to everyone?
Just out of curiosity, if Jim's sitting right here, she's already talked to Dave, and Jim's just sitting here, wouldn't you just ask Jim his opinion or what his preference is now, so then you don't have to drag it out, because if he disagrees, then you have to go to a whole nother meeting? See what.
All right. I'll come back to that. Go ahead, Sadie, come.
Let me set my address. I did send you guys all a letter through Sangara today with just a reminder and some more details. Our concern isn't this specific event, it's just in general, the precedent that will be set for, it is this event, but not because of who it is or what it is, it's just the fact that we're not in favor of businesses, of events shutting down the street when it is not for the greater public good. I know that the van will be open to the public, but it is not an event, if the street is shut down and it prohibits customers from coming to any of our businesses, whether it's just ours or anybody else's, it's unfair to us to be able to have to take a hit in our business for the day for an event that in itself, the party doesn't have to happen in the street. There are other places, I know that they want to have it there, and that's fine, I totally get it, but there are new people in town now that it matters to our business. And we have seen every time a street is closed for Good Egg Days, for the Gridiron, R V T V, all those events, it, our business takes a hit until that big public crowd comes downtown, and we have been fine with that because we get to participate in the planning. I've been very involved in the Good Egg Days Committee in both R V T V and Gridiron. I get to weigh in on and be informed about what's all going on. There are events and things, activities planned for all ages, so we know that in the long run, it's going to be good for everybody. I really appreciated the letter that Russ at the barbecue event sent with his proposal and all the activities that they're gonna have. I think these are good events for the downtown, but our request is just that we be considerate for the purpose of shutting down the street, of it being for everybody's benefit and not for, I mean, private events. We're basically turning the street into an event venue, and there are event venues, and we're just saying, can we reconsider about that, just not for just one event, but for all considerations moving forward, is what do we want to utilize? We're gonna shut down the street and have it impact businesses, what should the purpose of it be? So it's not just the one event, it's just setting the precedent for how we do this now and in the future.
So let me ask you one question, Sadie, before you go here, but. Way our options here and find a solution, but would you have a problem with what Mr. Billy said was to block off the street there like at the end of.
If they can do it, that the traffic would still be open and that there wouldn't be a true street closure, and it doesn't seem a true ship and threat, I mean, distracting the customers, like that you don't feel like you can't go down the street, then I'd be totally fine with that. Like, like I said, we just like, we don't want the street to be shut down, that people come downtown, see our sign on the highway, and they come downtown and they're like, well, we don't know what's going on, they don't want to come in or try to find their way around because it's just, it's blocked off and we're unfamiliar, so. That's just our point, and we are working on the building at one thirteen, and we are hoping to have it ready by then. I don't have a guarantee plan on that, but it has been gold, it's kind of been a moving target, but, I mean, we're not ready to announce what our plans are for that building yet, but it kind of prohibits anything really going on there that day with people being able to get in and out of there very easily if the whole building is blocked off, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go back to Jim. Jim, do you want to say anything?
Ultimately, your decision, but you are setting a precedent if you allow private events, is all I'm gonna say.
Audrey, go ahead, you can come back up if you have something else to say.
I just have one thing. They've had a private event before, and it was for a class reunion, and it was private, and it was right in front of the bar and took up the whole space. It was a huge tent, and I was just saying that it's not the first time they've had something special up there like that. And it's not that people can't come to it, anybody can come in and walk in and come to it, so, that's all. Thank you.
So police chief said he's okay. Jim, if the council is okay with it?
And it's just in front of Ruby's because this drawing takes up quite a bit. It's not that big, is it? Because it goes in front of the flower shop and.
Do you know where the light pole is in front of the bar? My bar? Johnny's?
Yes.
It's in between the releasing John.
Right.
Right there, they're gonna put a fence there before, they were gonna put a fence there, and then clear down the way, it's before Paige's building. I don't know really what that's called. There's two light poles right, right there, and then we're gonna go from pole.
Is that right? Is where Wilters used to be?
Yes, yes.
So, can I move it subject to council member Billy's recommendation? Catch one option.
Or the other option, like what Mr. Cobble said, maybe just have it in the back. Understand what Mr. Smith was saying about the rock and everything, but to me, I think that'd be the better option is to have it in the back. I wouldn't have a problem, I know that's kind of city-owned back there, you know, behind the old.
No.
Right back.
Okay, probably, probably. The owners split it.
Okay, so totally wrong on that one, but that would be my, my suggestion as well, you know, to appease everybody. That way she can still have her function and the businesses of town can still be open as well. That's just my two cents.
I agree with you. I mean, I, if they can figure out some way, some agreement on, but not closing down the
Now, I guess my question is, you know, talking about public and private events, I mean, how do we classify, I mean, Paige brought up the point, the best of the block cook-off? I mean, that's not truly a city-sponsored event, that is a private organization sponsoring that event. How is that different than what they're wanting to do versus Good Egg Days or R V T V, Gridiron, stuff like that? So, I mean, if we say, no, you gotta make arrangements to this, what about best of the block? It's really in the same scenario.
Yeah.
Who does best of block, man?
That's Russ, right, and that went through the Downtown Revitalization Group.
I mean, is that truly a city or is that just?
It's a nonprofit organization that was, I believe, that was programmed, developed by the former economic development director, Chrisman. So there's kind of a city connection there. So they are, it's revitalization is a group that wants to encourage the community's well-being.
No, I perfectly agree. I mean, it brings business to town, it's a, it's a good event. It's just against when.
I'm sorry, it's more specifically designed to get people in here to, to visit businesses. It's tailored to that.
Yeah, it's an economic driver.
The last motion is to deny it.
And I think, I think when this all came about, because I do believe Mrs. Reslow was the one who came up with that solution, and we probably didn't even think about maybe having a hurdle like this.
Sure, oh, yeah, you never, you never.
You never know.
We'll all get something, yeah. You won't think about it, but you are. But if it wasn't, we will get something exceptional.
I'm gonna make a motion that if they want to have the event, I would strongly suggest maybe having it in the back alley and not close down the street.
When is this, Audrey?
July twentieth.
July, so we got a couple months. And I'm not, I'll wait till we talk about your motion, or do you want me to? I didn't know if we could table it. And then maybe have somebody get with you, kind of see, I don't, I don't know how big the trailers, I'll be honest, I don't know anything about that, see where it would fit in that space, you know? Or maybe if they had the trailer in back, and then we close down that space so people can go out in front too, something like that, and then revisit the next meeting instead of just jumping into some sort of definite answer tonight or decision tonight. That way it gives, gives us a chance to work with you, see, see what are the best things of being, see maybe we could, like I said, maybe put the trailer back, I don't know, you know, because I don't go up there very often, so I'm not, I'm not sure what it's like, you know? And I'm sure things change as I've been up there, so, but I don't know if that's something.
What about the parking lot to the, I don't even know who owns it or care to say or anything, but Old Morrison Building in back?
They've just sold that.
Right, could you put the trailer there and have a live van in that area?
You'd have to contact the property.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, so maybe Mike's on the right page here, maybe we just think about some options and then revisit it.
Okay, so that's what, for this April, May, still a couple months, we'd have two more meetings prior to that event.
So the motion during, and then we'll table, table.
I guess, real quick, I mean, I guess my comment is, not knowing that parking lot, does that allow connectivity? I know with, you guys are probably wanting to use your liquor license to extend out, does that still allow that connectivity?
Yes, you will have time now to study all these things.
Because it's a good question. Yeah, exactly, and there might be something, I don't know, that we'd be able to do with that, you know, since, you know. So.
You have time to.
Does that sound reasonable, Audrey, right now?
Yeah, but I don't think it'll allow us to have it, you have to close down your bar and move it over to there, my license and everything, and I don't know. If you, if you talk to Luis up at the Mexican restaurant, he knows how to do it, because he was looking at getting, when we were doing the R V T V, he wanted a liquor license for his food trailer, and they thought you were gonna have to surrender his at the restaurant and then move it to the trailer, but he didn't have to, there's a way around that. I don't know what it is, I just know that he would.
Let's say, if you fence it from your back fence, all the way around that?
So the musician was prepared that I could.
If you fence it from your back fence, all the way around that, if it's come to your area, it would still be into your, it would be attached. Maybe you weren't way around it.
Number nine, requested vacate alley, St. Nando's, concern.
Okay, we just have something that may would like, that may would like to eat it and put it in the minute.
Thoughts to consider vacating any alleys for streets? For the past twenty years, various Stewart City councils have consistently looked long-range in their decision-making. That's a forward-looking vision, must be utilized when requested by individually, individual property owners to vacate a street or alley represented. Sadly, that long view has been missing in the past at times. This current council can take a strong stance and help future councils deal with the too frequent requests to vacate. These requests usually come before the council, when the property owner does not know what they have acquired before the purchase, lack, or due diligence, or discover their personal property goals, could be met with the city vacating an alley or a street. One just needs to read the city code one three seven zero one, power to vacate, when in the judgment of the council, it would be in the best interest of the city to vacate a street, alley, or portion thereof, or any public grounds. This code does not state property owners, but the best interest of the city and the view of the city. This code does not state the best interest of the city, but the best interest of the city and the view of the city should extend to residents of today and far into the future. Justifications that nothing has been built in this area since, question mark, certainly cannot override the mandate to provide flexibility for future generations. That is why these streets and alleys were plotted to begin with. The city was a century old in 1970 and a claim could have been made that Southwest Stewart had not developed, so probably unlikely, but Debru Gilman and Roy Sargent and other builders had outlook by developing the area with 40 or more new homes that create great residential neighborhoods today. This council should set a new standard. Does this create substantial benefit for the city today without trying, sorry, without tying the hands of future leaders of centuries from now? This should stand as our new benchmark that would remove the inconsistent patterns from, inconsistent, sorry, inconsistencies from our past of decisions being made by who lobbies hardest or devolves the right relationships. This must be, this must become a principled decision-making process. Lack of due diligence or convenience do not meet the bar of substantial best interest to the current and future citizens of the cities of Stewart. Sincerely, Bob Cook.
Okay, so we don't have anything really additional to add from what we had last month. In fact, we just came from Minnesota. We literally came straight here. So, we haven't even been home yet. So, as far as alleyway goes, our contractors building our garage, apparently they started it today. We weren't even home. They started it to get rid of the old concrete from our previous garage that we got rid of. So, as far as it being vacated, I don't think we have that much of a concern at this point. Our only concern at this point going forward, well, there's two things actually. So, the first one is if you look at where our driveway technically is set, where the gravel is, half of it is ours, half of it's the alleyway. And so, literally like our property line is in the middle of our current existing driveway that's been there. If we wanted to straighten our driveway and have it just in our yard, not at all in the alleyway, the city has a tree right there in the center. So, our question would be, would the city remove that tree for us, since it's the city's tree on the boulevard? It would be right where our driveway should be.
Is it a live tree?
It's a big, Dustin Polly remembers, big tree by the mailboxes. Yep.
Yeah, it's still alive.
So, technically it's a live tree. It's huge, but technically that tree is where, if you were to make our driveway come straight out, the tree's in our way now. So, so currently, half of our driveway is an existing rock driveway. Half of it is ours, half of it technically is the city alleyway. So, we would always have to use that alleyway unless the city removes that tree for us to be able to create a straight driveway. So, that's our first concern.
That's your first one?
That's the first, the second one is our neighbors. Our second one is our neighbors, apparently wanted our one-car garage. We got rid of the one-car garage. We did not give them the one-car garage. So, I got a threatening message from that homeowner, basically telling me that if Dave and I ever, anything in the future, if we want a permit or vacation, they will fight us with heavy resistance, was her exact words, at every turn. So, I just want it to be noted that anytime my husband and I try to get anything from you guys, she will meet us with heavy resistance and will fight us at every turn. And I think that's disgusting. I don't think that's neighborly. I think, I don't, first of all, take kindly to blackmail. I don't take kindly to threats. And I definitely do not take kindly to harassment. And if that occurs, we will have a problem. So, I just want that to be noted for the record.
Going back to.
He was gonna say something.
I was just gonna say, thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, absolutely.
Having a special meeting about it.
We definitely appreciate that.
Yeah.
Just by your time.
Okay, you know, back to the tree thing, I don't know if it, if we wanna, or something like that. I mean, I get that the tree would be in your guys' scope of your driveway, but if the tree's not dead or anything like that, I don't know if it could be, per se, the city's issue to take that tree down just for your own convenience, I guess.
So, then we would have to continue to use the alleyway as our driveway?
Or you remove the tree down yourself.
Jim, have we had that instance before that you know of?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times people do that. They just, they utilize the alley as opposed to finding the problem. When they build a garage or use an existing garage, our ordinance does state that we won't remove the tree unless it is dead or dying or diseased, which it isn't. But we are gonna surface that alley. We've had a request for two years to surface that alley, so eventually we will surface that alley, so it would be no different turning into your driveway off the alley than anybody else's. So.
Could we continue to park our boats on the side of our garage?
Not in the alley.
Okay. And so, then they couldn't park their trailer there either?
You can't, yeah, yeah. It is a city ordinance that there is nothing allowed to be parked in the alley.
So, I wanna make that noted then. If we can't park our boats, they cannot park their trailer next to us.
I mean, I did drive by the property and take a look at it today. There is a concern. The construction crew did leave all the torn-up concrete in.
We haven't even gone yet.
Well, I mean, that's an issue with the contractor, but that is an issue with, that should be noted if there is concerns about blocking the alley. Your contractor is currently blocking the alley, which could prevent an issue getting to the electrical service if something happened to that property at the moment.
I'm assuming, I don't, I haven't had a chance to talk to him. We literally just came here from Minnesota. I had some doctor's appointments today in Minnesota. So, I'm assuming they will talk, remove that. I can call our contractor and ask to make, when that is gonna be removed. Where is it at?
It's literally right in the, they're right away.
So, is it like, is it like the, like the old concrete or what is it?
Yeah, it's the old concrete from the.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
It's from your, from your driveway.
Okay.
Do you have something, Jim?
And then there is, if they leave any construction trailers or anything like that, that has to be left on private property. It cannot be left on the street.
I don't, I, where are they parked? I don't even know.
From your house. There's a trailer.
Okay. So, I need to call them to move their trailer or I need to go out there and talk to myself? Or like, what do you want me to do?
I'm sure we can address it tomorrow and they can correct it.
Christina, did you have something?
Yeah, once they sit down, I'll come up.
I also like to address that I did go out, like I said, I walked the property. I took a look. I mean, the concerns, you know, if we continued with the thought of vacating the alleyway, that would cause concerns on either side of me. We vacate, we don't vacate, you have a concern where a tree would have to be taken down. If we vacate, it would create the same problem for the other property owners where there are trees where they wouldn't have reasonable access to their garage.
They would have half of that alleyway, so they would still have access.
It still would be very tight. I don't know if it would meet the minimum requirements of 10 to 12 feet for a driveway. And that would be the concern. I know there's one smaller tree that would potentially have to be taken down, not necessarily the big one. So, that is a concern that it does go either ways looking at it, but yeah, obviously we have ordinances that prevent the city from taking the trees down.
Totally understandable, totally do that. So, like I said, my husband and I are very fair, kind people. And we tried to talk to these neighbors ahead of time. After the city council, I tried to talk to her as well, and it was difficult. I want to say that. And I don't take kindly to threats, so I want that noted.
I know, just to kind of add on, that in the four years I've been up here, the council's only vacated one street and that was for the water tower. So, that was a substantial benefit to the city. So, I do appreciate Bob's letter and we did lose another street out here because it wasn't written into our contract for when Dyke was gonna come in. We should have had it in the contract. If they didn't build, we, that street does not get vacated and that got missed on that, so I, I do believe that we need to look well into the future for these things, so appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna bore you with dramatic details. The contractor that was building the garage gave us the okay to have the garage, so we were gonna move it. When we came up to pull permits, we were informed we couldn't have it. No big deal. My heavy resistance were, was for the vacation of the alley and the alley only, so.
I can show them the message.
I'm not getting into some dramatics. That's not why I'm here. Josh and I have voiced our concerns. We wanna have access to our garage. Our trailer was maybe a foot over an alleyway at one point. It's not been, when we were alerted to where the alley exactly was, 20, we measured 20 foot. We have a stake, so we moved our trailer. Today, when I was at work, my ring camera starts going off and we have people in front of our house, and I'm like, what's going on? So, I had to rush home because we had skid loaders all over our property. And so, Josh went out there and he was like, hey, you know, this is our property. We would just appreciate if you keep your skid loaders on the, like, in the alley or on the other side. The contractors were super nice. They had a string. We found our other property pin, so that way they could see visibly, you know, this is our property and then there's the alley. And then our main concern, and which I voiced to Craig earlier, was the fact that you can't even get down the alley right now. You, there's a big trailer in the way. There's concrete everywhere. So, if there was a storm tonight and electricity went down, our house would be without electricity because you cannot get to the pole. And we actually have two trees back there. Craig saw it. One is on Tox property, but it's leaning this way. And the tree that's in the alleyway, that's the city's, is leaning the other way. So, it could very well fall either way to the pole. There again, we're without power because you can't get through that alley. And as property owners, that's not fair to us. And then second of all, there is a trailer in the front, and if somebody was to come up on there, there's nothing in front of it. You're gonna smack right into it. I mean, we have a ton of kids that fly through there. You're on a cell phone. You're gonna miss it because you can't see it. It's flat. There's nothing on it. So, that's just a huge concern, you know, when we're driving. We've got kids out there. I don't want anything happening, but it is, we don't wanna vacate it. We wanna keep the alley. But ultimately, it's your choice. If you do decide to vacate it, we would like to purchase half of it as that, you know, I think is our right, but we would rather it not.
And that's what we wanted all along, was for the city to vacate it and make it half and we get half. I never wanted to impede on her half of the alleyway, ever. And I expressed that to her in Facebook. I expressed it to her husband in person when he came over to our house after my husband tried to contact him. We never tried to take anything from them. And that's where I think there's a lot of confusion on her part.
Any discussion?
I don't know.
Oh, go ahead. No, go right ahead.
I was gonna say, I did have a comment, you know, about mayor may not be completely to the point here, but, you know, the question or the comments about Bob's article or paper that he wrote there, you know, he's talking about us setting precedent on vacating streets or vacating alleyways. You know, I mean, something I'd like to point out is, going forward, most cities, and for the past 50 years, a lot of cities have been not building alleyways going forward. We chose not to do that out at our new subdivisions. We have not plotted a single alleyway. I mean, while I do see there's benefits in having alleyways for those that need them and that currently use them, those that necessarily may not have any benefit to the city or to the landowners for being a public alleyway, I see no reason not to vacate. But again, in this instance, I do see there are issues on both sides to where vacating is probably not the best decision going forward. But I just wanted to point that out that, you know, this is kind of a, this is the way it's always been type viewed to me, whereas going forward, a lot of architectural firms and cities are not planning alleyways. I just wanted to point that out. I mean, I don't agree with vacating streets. And I didn't realize we had that issue with that contract. I thought we willingly had that going forward. So, that's an interesting thing. So, that's just kind of something I wanted to share out. Appreciate it.
Did you have something, Mike?
Oh, no, I was gonna.
Do we, do we need a motion or are we just?
Yeah, I want you to feel on the decline. I agree with that motion. Okay, what was about Cawall?
I'm sorry.
Second by Russell. Had you vote, Cawall?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Billing?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Number 10, vacated North Harrison Street, North Gaines, between North 8th Street and North 9th Street, Mr. Ryan?
Yes, Neil?
Neil.
He can't hear you. Or have him come up like right in front of you. That's what we normally have to do because he has a hard time hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yeah, that, I wanted to downsize. Right now, I have a house that's 3,200 square feet. I got a 40, 45 by 36 metal building. I got a 24 by 24 garage. I got a 24 by 36 garage. And I got properties on both sides of me that were abandoned streets. And so, I looked at different house plans on either side of me. And I guess Jim thought there's a problem getting back to the sewer there the last time I was up here. But that problem been solved. I and the neighbors opened up the west fence and if you can drive a semi through it now, we cleaned the trees out. It's widened up. You can drive right around to the sewer. Don't have to move any trees, no water line, no fiber optic or anything, no fences. And so, I liked it. I understand when I bought that, Foster's built a horse barn back there on that street because they said it was vacated. It's never gonna be ever used again. So, the city let him build a horse barn back there. So, I thought I owned that. So, I cleaned up everything, all the trees, the fences, the cattle panels and everything, curb back to the barn. You couldn't see the barn when I bought that property. And so, then I wanted, I was thinking about building on the west side, but I guess Sherms, that street was 80 foot wide. Sherms got the whole 80 foot and the fence line's right there on the dead center of it. I don't understand how that happened either. But they, they own it now. So, I tried to buy a Finley's. Finley's own it now. He didn't wanna sell it. I don't know why. I mowed it for 10 years. And Finley's asked me if they could have permission to go into that corner of the, of the, that street to go back to haul metal out of there. And I said, go ahead. Then I found out after I took down about four ice, ice trees or five, that they owned it. They owned the 40 foot in my yard that I've been mowing for 10 years. So, what I wanted to do was buy that and build a house there. But since that didn't work out, I'd like to buy the east 80 foot and build a house there where the horse barn is. Because it's a street that goes to nowhere. It's a dead-end street. The 9th street behind is, is abandoned too.
Jim, is that street that Mr. Ryan is talking about on the east side of his, is that?
That's Gaines. That is platted North Gaines Street, correct.
So, so that wasn't shut down?
No, it's still a platted street.
It is still, okay.
So, the assessors show it's vacated, so that's what's confusing me. It's not actually vacated?
Not to the best of mine, all in all.
Or the horse barn is or the leaning, whatever you wanna call it.
And I'm sure the city didn't give them permission to build that in the street. That's probably just where they built it back in the day.
But I understand the city still owns that and I'd be willing to buy it if, if it's possible. I've, I've got plans of a house that's between 960 square feet up to another that's 1,100 and some square feet.
Jim, is there a sewer main that runs east and west back behind his property?
That is correct.
There is one.
That is correct. That's what Gaines Street has been maintained, been held on to, is for access to that same.
And that'd be probably the same deal being on the west side, so you could just go right in front of Wells's and just keep going to get back to it?
Yeah, because now where that's opened up, if you go down there and look, you can drive right around, curve right up to the sewer and not, not have to take any trees down, no fences, no nothing, absolutely nothing. And that's the way they did the last time that sewer plug went, like, same way.
This is like deja vu.
The council, deny it, this is, this is his place, right? Yeah. Where, where is he? Oh, my dear, please want to go look at this one. Yeah, see where that, if you go down to see where that street turns around, right there, it's just straight, right there. That's where he's wanting to go.
Yeah.
Right over here on the west side where you can just go straight. And that's city-owned.
Mr. Patrick, yeah. Also, this has been addressed with previous council. Addressed with previous council. Addressed with previous council.
He's gonna deny it, that's it, that it was.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that unfortunately I think we're gonna have to deny it at this time. Just so we have access back to sewer system.
What's the reason for denying it?
What's that?
What was the reason for denying it?
Just so we have access to get back to the sewer system that's back behind there.
You can drive right in the west side, drive right onto it. See, there's no way, you know, planning zoning, I asked him to come down the west, not one person coming down, not one. And so I said, if you come down there, if planning zoning come down there, I can show you, there's no way you're gonna get the sewer back on that eighty foot square foot or that eighty foot street.
Yeah.
There's no way, there's trees back there, there's fiber optic, and there's sewer lines. But why, why would you want to come in that way when you could drive right around to it?
Well, and, and I-
I mean, don't even make sense.
Well, and I'm not here to pick on you by no means, Mr. Ryan, but the, the people before you asked the same thing, and we just denied theirs as well. They asked to vacate an alley, and we denied.
As an alternative, could you create an easement on your current property to, property to the backside and build on the backside of your property? And then still portion, you know, split your property into a portion to build back there with an easement for, for like, and that was still within that same area and not have to worry about trying to vacate the street?
Yeah. And I told him I'd give him easement to go in the west side and go down, but they'd have to take fence out, trees out, where they can go in the, uh, that west and drive right around to it, I done it the other day. If you go down there and look, come down and look at it, anybody come down, look at it, and I'll show you exactly why you can't go on that eight street at the dead end, it goes to nowhere.
I do have a motion out there, if anybody's interested in that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Russell, how do you vote, Cobal?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Okay, number eleven, Coon Valley Fiber Optic Project, proposed lease. Set a date on public hearing. Date, two thousand twenty-four?
Where exactly is this? What's that? Where exactly is this property located at?
On the north side of the fire station.
Okay, that would, okay.
Right behind the fire station.
Okay.
Is it somewhere there?
Yeah, it is.
Is it on the other side of the fuel barrels, is that where we're looking?
Yes, it would be east of the fuel barrels, yes.
Okay.
Need a motion? By Cobal? Seconded by Dolly, how do you vote, Cobal?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Number twelve, Stewart Library, grant dollars received. Lisa?
Gosh, I haven't seen you guys for a long time. Things have been busy and things have been good. So I added to your packet a request for amendment of our current fiscal year twenty-four for three reasons. We received a ALA grant, that's the American Library Association's grant, and we received ten thousand dollars. That money will go for people with disabilities. The biggest portion will go towards putting automatic door openers on the, on, excuse me, on the public bathrooms here in the lobby. And then the others will be used for whatever we have left, which would either be with sight, maybe hearing, maybe autism, we're not, we're not committed to that yet. We also received from Guthrie County Community Foundation a grant of three thousand five hundred. In the attachment, oh, there's the attachment that says, says everything, the grant agreement form, and that will be used for new computers. And my third item is Guthrie County has increased our income from the Guthrie County Supervisors to the tune of three thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. And I'd like that also to be amended, to be added to what I'm requesting for a total amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars.
I already talked to Lisa before.
I was gonna say, you know we're gonna look at you.
She just, she just informed me that she just wanna get the-
Don't you have any questions?
Well, that's, that's amazing that you got the grant.
Yes, yes, the, the, the big one, I believe it's like three hundred and twenty libraries in the whole nation received this grant, and kudos to the state of Iowa, thirty of us received it.
Good work.
So we're working hard, anyway. It was good to see some of you this last week, so. Thank you very much.
Okay. You bet, we're gonna take a five minute break. Nobody else, Jim. That's embarrassing.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, man. Well, that's, that's amazing that you got the grant.
Yes, yes, the, the, the big one, I believe it's like three hundred and twenty libraries in the whole nation received this grant, and kudos to the state of Iowa, thirty of us received it.
Good work.
So we're working hard, anyway. It was good to see some of you this last week, so.
Yeah. All right, number thirteen, North Gaines, Porsche, zero.
Thank you, Mayor Fogan. Uh, so there's four items, uh, they're all for payment applications. First one is for the street lighting out at Wumble, and that is for stored materials for the lights, they won't actually put the lights up till they get the paving done. Uh, this is just a second payment estimate.
You have any issues against it?
No. Correct.
We'll have one motion to vote for.
Oh, you might have one motion for, oh, okay, okay. Um, Safe Routes to School, partial payment number four. This is a DOT funded project, so it goes through DOT audit, checking things out. Uh, this is money that we measured everything up, and is due to the contractor. We're still under budget for the project, and it looks like we're gonna end up a little bit under budget when we're done. So recommend approval of the Safe Routes to School partial payment estimate. Except, that's, the work is done, but because it's DOT funded, we gotta do the audit, expect that later this month. I would anticipate acceptance of that at your main council. Uh, Wumble Phase Three, this is for work that has been out there, they have been out there working, they're working on the lift station, uh, doing some grading work, paving, they were hoping to start April first, it's been a little cold. Right now, they're looking at starting that paving next week. As it's scheduled, start putting pavement down. Recommend, uh, uh, pay estimate number seven, approved. And then the last one is sewer rehab work being done by Digis Sewer, it's just the first pay estimate. And that was for some point affairs done around town. Uh, it'll be a while before they're coming, this is related to Harland Street, Harland Street Sewer Repair. Um, but recommend pay estimate number one as well.
Okay.
Any questions about any of those projects?
Any concerns? I'll answer from you.
Uh, yeah.
Yep.
Any motion?
Making motions? Great, I'll second. Cobal? How do you vote, Cobal?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
All right, number fourteen, Stewart Rescue Department, update.
Hello. Uh, I got some good news. Uh, we have a new ambulance, as of Thursday, I think they delivered it. Um, working on, there was some discrepancy between the invoice and what we had agreed to pay, so we're kinda working through that. Um, but in general, it's here. Uh, I talked to the radio guy, we should have that this week, so potentially end of this week, early next week, it should be in service. A couple things with that, one, we'll be doing sealed bids for selling off the other ambulance, one that's outside right now. Uh, so expect that to go out, um, and we'll do that probably in about a month or whatever, except sealed bids for a little while and then sell.
Just gonna, which unit, is that the Menloso unit or?
No, that's technically our unit two right now, so that's the two thousand and six that Stewart would have bought, well, in two thousand and six.
It's our revision unit?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's got, you know, about fifty some thousand more miles on it, and it just mechanically has a lot going on that's been niggling and dying, I guess, and so, yeah, that's kind of the, honestly, the inside is a little nicer, we like to set up a little bit more, but mechanically, I think it's just the better option to just head up down the road. So, um, so we'll be doing that as well. Uh, then kinda last part of getting the new ambulance in is that now we get to start talking about a new, new ambulance, so we need to replace our two thousand and twelve, which is the type one. So now that we have this ambulance in, we'll kinda take the drawings, the design of the ambulance, and kinda say, here's what we like about this, here's what we don't, how can we adjust these drawings, and then we'll end up sending, you know, those out to a handful of people or whoever to, you know, bid and see what we can get for a type one. So we'll also be working with Chip to kinda figure out where that, that financing and stuff, and I know that there's, um, there's a lot of stuff going on as far as, as what, where we could be in the year from now, so, um, but if we order that today, and I know I've said this before, if I ordered that today, it would still be two years before we got that ambulance. So the sooner we can, we can get on that, the better, you know, kinda the reason that, that invoice we got for this ambulance is kinda, you know, something we need to talk about is because, because it takes so long to get them, and you gotta get the new chassis and this kinda stuff. And so, um, the sooner we can get on having that ordered, having that order placed, you know, we don't pay, I think, I don't know, maybe it was fifteen hundred dollars that you pay to sign the contract, and then you don't actually um, submit payment for it until you receive it. So, you know, there's, there's some things with the money there that, that we've got, and I, you know, given Chip the heads up and Ash the heads up too, so that's not something that's happening today or next week or whatever, but, um, now that we have the other one, we need to start doing that, cause I mean, that other one's what, twelve years old now, so, uh, it's got a hundred and fifty some thousand miles on it, it's ready to, it runs well, but in two years from now, where could we be, who knows? Um, uh, we also, uh, like Lisa, received a grant from the Guthrie County Community Foundation. Uh, we're buying two more handheld radios and another digital radio for our truck. We'll have digital radios in them, and then we'll have four handhelds so that we can have, you know, both crews have two of them, et cetera, so we can have more for other people, uh, so that's exciting. That was, I think it was eighty seven hundred dollars that, that they granted to us, so we really appreciate that, and we'll kinda, um, those radios are four to six months out, but they're on order and then they're coming, so, uh, so that's really exciting as well. Um, kinda last part is with the Guthrie County EMS and those kinda deals, we, you know, we, the twenty-ninth, we had our state inspection, which we do every three years, uh, we made it through that, I'm figuring shooting up some stuff with that. Um, and so that kinda took away some from that, but, you know, I'm working on getting those contracts. I think right now I'm kind of in a clearer space to, to really focus on that. Uh, and in case, I had sent an update earlier, but, you know, just to kinda mention briefly again, you know, we don't wanna really say too much, but, uh, we did have a meeting with the CEO of Audman County as Panora has ended, started the process to end their contract with doing transfers, so, nothing big there yet, but just, we, we made that contact, we're gonna kinda see what that may or may not hold, so. Questions as far as, yeah, that stuff is concerned?
So you said that you met with them, um, and a lot of times, I think Panora was transferring to Omaha, doing some transfers or taking patients to Omaha from Audman County?
Correct, uh, at times, yep. That's, they're kind of split between, pretty much halfway between those two.
I would wish to have something for the mission. That's when they received.
Digging into a little bit, Monka.
Well, yeah, yeah, there's a lot of.
And, and listening, having gone through some of the meetings, listening to Panora, it seemed like they were having an issue where they were doing a lot of transfers and not being able to cover their area as well. So, looking at us, right now, we only have the ability for one crew right now. Even if we get two crews and we go into a transfer, if we were to take on something like that, then we're kinda falling into what Panora could be on that, unless there's something amazing that could get us a third crew.
And that was part of the conversation we initially had, uh, when we met with him, was that I'm not going to promise anything that I can't deliver, and so if I can't protect Stewart, which is my, our main objective, right, and provide them with the service that they need, um, then, then we say, well, we can't get this to work, right? Right? So they only, but we aren't there yet, right now, we're just sat down, we all met each other, we said, okay, now we have some, you know, some open lines of communication to kinda figure out what that might look like on either side, to then kinda figure out, is this something we can do without sacrificing service here in town? So.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just for some of the council members that might not know more situation than that, you know, um, if we can make it work, you know, benefits each other, that would be pretty good.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely, yeah, and that's, you know, there was no way to find out if that benefited us if we didn't start something.
Right.
Like Panora was, that's two contracts, they had the, the talent at Guthrie County Hospital, right?
Correct, yes.
So they're running, they were, they were, right?
But, all right, it's, it's ninety, so currently, they're still, but yeah, so yeah, so they're running two. Can't really imagine how that's right with that.
As soon as we get the information, we, of course, we will work on it, we'll, we'll vote back to the council.
Okay.
All right, number fifteen, Stewart Police Department, Chief Reedall.
Okay, so last meeting, um, kind of went over some of the, the topics with the SRO and I think it was, or the SRO program. Um, and it was brought up that just, I think financially there were some questions and so I wanted to kind of make a little more clear for everybody. Um, me, the mayor, Ash and Sarah had a, a meeting, oh, a couple of weeks ago. Pretty long meeting. We went over all this stuff and uh, came to kind of an agreement on, on where we stood. Um, so I can go through this real quick. I wanted to give you some time to, to look at it, but uh, essentially that first, the, the first box at the top would, you know, be the cost that if we were to add a fifth officer without doing any, any SRO program, the added cost of that. And then the bottom section is showing that, you know, with the SRO program being funded, the two thirds being funded by the school district, what that would look like with the addition of a fifth officer. And as you can see, um, we actually come out, essentially breaking even, but even a chance of, of making a small little bit of revenue. Vainly, the big difference on the second section, why it would be that way, is I mentioned at the last meeting, we can kind of use some of this as a, a way to, uh, cover some overtime. So that lowers the cost a little bit that we currently have. Uh, and then also obviously with them willing to reimburse for that, that portion of the, the SRO contract, that essentially, you know, pays for the fifth officer. Any questions on that?
When do they need an answer?
I mean, right now, we're still kind of in that negotiation period with them. The way that we left it with them, they agreed to the terms as we had laid out with them, contingent on your guys' agreement. Um, and that was the one third, two third. Uh, so they've agreed to that. If you guys agree to it, I can go back to that, that meeting, the next meeting, and they would sign it. You know, so that's with the one third, two third. If there was something that you guys wanted to change or additions that you guys wanted to make, then that's something I would have to bring up, you know, to their next meeting and then see if they were in agreement with that.
How, how would it go forward um as far as like raises goes? I don't know if you guys talked that far into it, because obviously Sergeant Geiser wouldn't make that much money for here on out. Hopefully she wouldn't want to, but, or would at least want some kind of an increase. Has that been talked about with the school on how we're gonna go about that?
So the, the contracts would be renegotiable every year.
Every year.
Uh, the way I think they would, I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but I mean, the way I was considering it is it would, we would address it every year like we normally would with any other employee. And if, if there's a, you know, a four percent raise that year, then that's what we do. And that's what we ask the school district to, you know, to increase their part, um, to cover those additional costs. You know, that's obviously part of that. Um, the other thing that was brought up during the meeting that we had with, with Ash and Sarah was the, the cost of uh vehicle, like fuel and vehicle maintenance. Um, that at the time when we made this initial, or this, this new contract, um, and we brought it down to the one third, two third, that wasn't discussed. But that's something I'm more than happy to bring up with the school board if, if that's something you guys wanted us to do. Um, I think we would need to come up with a fair number. I think our, our last contract was five dollars an hour for uh fuel and for maintenance costs of vehicles. I think if you, the way we're doing it currently with a part-time basis, I think Officer Geiser does a lot more traveling to and from because she's specifically going to a place for a reason. If this is a full-time thing, she's not going to be visiting all four schools every single day. This, it, it's not like she would be traveling as much. So I don't think the five dollars a, a, an hour would necessarily be fair. And I'm, I'm not sure the school district would agree with that, but I'm sure we could come up with some agreement that, uh, you know, that would cover those expenses because it will be our expense. So I think the school district would, would understand that.
Do you have any uh comment on? Like, it's the same like the rescue saying that I haven't received the information that I need yet. I met with Police Chief, I expressed my concern for the finance side. He's in charge of handling the schedule and handling who works, who doesn't. And he indicated to me that he will be just fine with the situation as it is, no change in the schedule. Correct me if I'm wrong there, for what I'm saying, that he's not gonna change any of the schedule he has right. Uh, I discussed with him, the car issues at the school will be taken the police officer with the car. And he said he's still in the negotiation session with the school. Uh, I brought up all these issues of the miscellaneous, which is the, the phone, the gas, the waiver on the car, all these things. So there is a way of how I feel about it, where I'm getting with it, but I haven't received the information yet because the school hasn't met yet between the time I met with him and the time he's here tonight. So I'm sure he needs some time to go to the school and discuss most of what we discussed too. That's really my concern about the information he has, is the finance side.
Right, right. No, that's what I'm, I'm.
And I, I, it, it, it will be a little bit different than what the number he has because if we go into hiring a fifth officer, it will be, the back will be a little bit bigger than what it is now. But we'll go on this based on the sixty four year, two seven, one seven. Uh, I don't know if the school is willing to negotiate more or not. So there's still more information that I need and all of you need to give a clear idea about the finance. Uh, but that's kind of how my take was with the meeting that I had with him. He's in the negotiation session with the school to try to get more information from them based on the information that I tried to gather. We're both not proposing to the idea, but we're just trying to find what the best for the city, school is gonna try to find what the best for the school.
Right.
So we need to meet halfway. That might take time, that might not.
Right.
Depends on the backup force.
I'm kind of partial and I don't know if it'd make a difference to meeting with the school board too. I think that would be beneficial for all of us and all of them too. Uh, if we're talking about some sort of a program like this, I mean, you guys can be there, of course. I mean, I'm not trying to cut anybody out, but um, I know we just approved our budget, you know?
That's the, yeah.
That's the thing. And where would this, you know, if we had extra costs, where are we gonna get that money from?
There will be a issue for another room, you will have to have the first room. So we have to go into another room with the same structure.
So how many years was that?
Four.
Four years, so three years ago approximately, because I Brian was still on there.
Yes.
We took out a four hundred thousand dollar bond.
Yes, and that, that got divot mistabilized and we have also, you have, you have stabilized, especially right now, as we are very stable as of this time.
Right.
As it is, without getting into that program and hiring fifth officer and this stuff, because that would have been a bit of a change of the structure.
So really, when we start talking about stuff like this, in my view, it should be done when we start talking about budgets prior to, not after we approve them. Because I believe that's how we did, that's what can win that bond happened. We, we did it after we had our budget. And, you know, it's, it's not, I'd love to see it go on. I just, I don't want to get in a situation like we were last night. That's the only thing. I don't want to see us have to take out a four hundred, four hundred fifty, five hundred thousand dollar bond to pay for this.
I mean, if I could answer that real quick, I, I think the difference between four hundred and fifty and seventy thousand is quite an extreme difference. I don't like that comparison. The other thing is I did bring up those previous issues before, when it was budget time, it just didn't get addressed until afterwards. Um, this is a program that, you know, it came when it came. I mean, just like anything else that the city deals with. If, if someone wants to try to start something new now, you know, that's what I'm gonna address and bring it up to you guys. Um, I think doing the math, I mean, you can see here, there's no hidden items here other than the fact that there will be, you know, some fuel costs and some, some maintenance to a vehicle to drive, you know, to the high school every once in a while. And the furthest trip would be to Redfield, you know, when she heads to Redfield. Um, we're talking, you know, even if we charge the five dollars an hour, that's seven thousand something dollars we'd have to increase. If we went lower than that, then obviously that's something we would approach the school. And I don't, I don't have an issue asking the school for that. As far as the, the rest of it, um, uh, this is, I think it's pretty clear. It's not gonna be anywhere near, you know, four hundred thousand or even a hundred thousand. It's gonna be pretty near to what, what is, you know, written on here. Uh, so I, I guess where I'm at is I don't mind going back to the, to the school board and, and having these discussions and going back and forth. But I have to have something to go back to them with, you know, and they've already given us their answer. They're willing to do one third, two third. Um, I, I'm willing to go back and say, here's the city's response and here's what the city wants to do, but I need to have something to tell them. Because if I go back to this next meeting and I say, well, I don't know, they really didn't say yes or no, um, what would you like me, you know, to bring up to them?
So I guess what I would like to see, and this is just my own opinion, I would like to see, instead of a year contract, I'd like to see maybe a three year contract with a percentage of, of an increase of, you know, each year.
Okay.
Um, to kind of lock it in a little bit because I, and I'm just, I'm just talking out the side of my head here, guys, so don't hold me to it. But so if we were talking about putting another officer on, at least we knew instead of year by year, you know, if the school says next year, no, we're done with this, we're not gonna do that, then here we are. Now we're kind of on an island on our own. But if we lock him in there, maybe a three year or whatever the case may be, um, that, that might be something to negotiate as well. Um, and now I'm gonna talk selfishly. Um, I do have kids that go to the school system and to have something like this and to have an officer out there present, I would love nothing more than that. And I think a lot of community people that do have children that goes to the, the school system would probably agree. But it's just, we need to find a solution for sure.
And if I could add to that real quick, um, when, when we're looking at this as a program, I think, I mentioned this at the last meeting. It, the SRO program is so hard to understand. A lot of people don't totally get what it does, you know, in any jurisdiction that does it. Um, but as council members, I want you guys to think also, this isn't just something that benefits the department or benefits the school. It benefits the community in, in ways that you just brought up. Um, but you know, if, if people are, are moving here from other places that are used to this in their school districts, uh, you know, the way I look at it is it's just as much an economic development growth as it is in anything else. I mean, if we're willing to invest money in, in, you know, advertising for the city and things like that, what a great way to advertise to the city. The people moving here to say, hey, we offer services that you guys are already accustomed to. You're moving out to these, these smaller towns and we offer the same stuff. I think that's a great way to look at it. Um, to, to, real quick, to go on to the, the three year thing, I totally understand that, why you bring it up. And um, in our meeting, school a year from now said, hey, we can't do this anymore. So one of the things we discussed is, you know, to get us through that first year or whatever you guys agreed on. Um, this doesn't have to be a full-time position. This could be, you know, filled with part-time staff, then we save the benefit money. So now we're saving even more annually because we don't have to spend that benefit cost. Um, so it could be an hourly position. Uh, we don't have the worries there of hiring a full-time person. And if for whatever reason the school is saying, hey, we can't do this anymore next year, we don't have to decide what full-time employee we have to, uh, you know, get rid of because of that. So that's the other option. Uh, you know, it's going with a part-time, but they, it wouldn't be one part-time person. It'd probably look like two or three part-time people that would fill those shifts. Um, but you know, that's also an alternative. And then I, I just want to mention too with, you know, we, we keep talking about it, but um, you know, all these things that are to come, uh, we've mentioned that, you know, in order to do a lot of that, we're gonna have to have that increased staff to, to manage some of those new things. And so, uh, this is a way to kind of do that with the assistance of some other areas. So I, I think it's something we should definitely have, but.
Did you reach out to um Dexter, Redfield and Dallas County?
So after that meeting, we, we talked about it. Um, the, so I think it sounded like a good idea at the time, but the thing city of Dexter, the city of Menlo, the city of Redfield, the only way that they benefit from this program is having an officer in the schools. They're already paying tax money to the school district to do that. The school district is paying two thirds of that cost. And, and that's part of the money that they've already pitched in. The, the part that we're asking to try to figure out was the money that would be used when she's now not in the schools and she's back in Stuart. The city of Menlo, the city of Dexter, the city of Redfield are not gonna pay for our officer to be working here, um, you know, on. So, you know, between that issue and then the fact that this pretty much uh shows that it covers itself, there is no, there is no, uh, we're not talking about, you know, any large amounts of money. I mean, literally worst case scenario, we're talking about, you know, three, four grand to, to make this happen. Um, I don't, I don't see that that's really a realistic, you know, goal.
So I have a question that I understand, you know, the other three towns are paying taxes. How come the school just doesn't hire her on full-time and pay her as a teacher keeps pay?
So as a police officer or?
Yes, as, as article.
I mean, there would be some, some issues with, she has to work for a police department to do that. So I mean, in order for her to have her authority, she's gotta work under a jurisdiction. So it either have to be the county or the, or the city. Um, that's what the twenty eight agreement covers is it gives, you know, us a little bit of that extension to reach out to those other schools. Uh, but again, it's, it's, it's such a complicated program. You know, when, when you go to SRO school, the first things they teach you is this is, a lot of people are really confused about what SROs do. There's, there's people that think that they're security guards and all they're, there's to do is safety. There's people that think, oh, they're just there to, to build this relationship between people. There are so many views and really it's a mixture of the truth, the reality, the truth, what she would be doing is a mixture of all those things and then a hundred other. Um, and so it, I don't think that realistically the school district can do that where they could just hire her and retain her authority and all that stuff as a police officer unless she were to work for us. So it has to be kind of a reimbursement.
So if there's other schools in the state that they pay a hundred percent, how do they do that?
So she, they still work for the police department, but the school just covers a hundred percent of the, of the cost.
Okay.
And it's, it's.
Okay, so I guess maybe that's it. Why don't we just? And all four towns are collecting this. All four towns are pitching in.
Sure, for that, for that portion. And I think when, when we were at the meeting, the, again, I don't want to speak for the school district, but um, the impression I got from that meeting was that they felt what was fair was to cover the cost of the hours that the SRO would be in the schools, which comes out to that one third or the two thirds, one third, you know, number. Uh, when we had initially met with them, we, we discussed the seventy five percent their contribution, twenty five percent ours. And that's when they answered back with, we think it's more fair for the two third, one third, because in reality, if you look at the amount of days per year that she would be in the schools, it would be two thirds. So, um, they were looking at it in a fair term. I think the biggest misconception here is that uh, certain people have this viewpoint that if she is to go work for the school full-time, that that will, that we lose her somehow as an officer for the department. That's absolutely untrue. The, the call going, the things that we're dealing with at the schools currently is taking a, an officer to, from a patrol shift to go out there and handle. So I don't want to get into the, the details, but let's just say that there's some investigation, uh, some sort of an assault or something that happens. And it happens to be a day that I'm working and that's gonna take three, four hours for me to go out there, do interviews, talk to people, do things like that. That's three or four hours that the city's already providing to the school for, for, you know, the school's not reimbursing us for that. Um, those are things that Monday through Friday, she will be able to handle. So, uh, we're not losing an officer. We're just reassigning an officer to a different responsibility in a way. And then the school district is willing to, to reimburse us for the time that, that she'll be in their building. During the summer, um, obviously we can reassign her to be, uh, you know, us to cover vacation hours, whether that's to help us during our busy season of the summer, whether that's to help with, maybe we have a, an investigation going on that we could use an extra set of hands on or, or whatnot, or, or there's some paperwork to do or whatever needs to be done. Um, you know, so even during the school year, but more so during the summer, we don't, we're not losing anything from this. Um, really, the difference is her office changes, but other than that, uh, her, it don't change as much. I'm not gonna lie, they change a little bit, but they don't change as much as I think a lot of people are thinking. It's not a hundred percent. It might be, you know, what she's currently doing as we speak. It's not a hundred percent. It might be, you know, what she's currently doing as we speak, maybe she can still do fifty percent of that and take on this extra role. She's not going to be able to do a hundred percent of what she's currently doing, but she will be able to do a, a good majority of what she's already doing.
And I don't know if we don't know what she'd be doing out there. It's just that we need to be, you know, really well. On, on what we're deciding here, uh, is the only thing. Um, uh, I'm definitely not against it, but you know, I need to. The school's got to look out the school way and look out for city, you know, um, that's the thing about it, so. That's all I'm getting at, yeah.
Christina, did you have some?
You are, you touched on it. My concern was if this is a state funded program, that school is getting state money. So what happens when the state decides, we get a different governor and the state decides, no more SRO money?
This is not a, at, at this point, this is not a state funded thing. They're, they're discussing the fifty thousand dollar or whatever. Um, per school, the school can choose to use for that, but that was never in our discussion.
But is the school going to get that money? Or it will affect their decision? That's, that was my only concern.
No.
You're doing it year by year and they're getting state funding and then that just disappears. And then you're stuck, you're kind of stuck. Is the school going to pay or are you going to have a big officer? So you hit on that when you said a three year.
Sure.
That was my only.
Again, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the, the, the school board again, but we never once discussed. That issue, they never brought it up to us and it was never my understanding, they were planning on using that money, nor have they got that money yet. Uh, this is a future thing that they're going to receive some money to cover, you know, the cost of providing security, that kind of stuff. Um, and I, and I believe the, the, the legislation is that they have to use it to provide, you know, a security guard or, or a police officer, something to those to effect. Um, but that, that's not part of this. To be honest, I, I, I understand the concern, but you know, if, if we're not talking about their costs to this. We're just talking about our costs to this. And if they're going to, if they're going to reimburse us for our costs to this, I don't think it really matters how they're going to pay for that. As long as they're paying for the portion that we need them to, to reimburse us for. Uh, you know, whether that comes out of that fifty thousand or, or a different number, you know, I don't think that should affect ours.
No, I was going to the fact that if they decided they didn't want to pay for it anymore and you're on a year-to-year contract, then you're stuck with a large amount of salary. Because she's not out there and they're not paying anymore. Not that they wouldn't. Does that make sense? If, if they stopped getting their funding, let's say they were getting it, they stopped getting their funding and then they said, we're not getting it anymore, so we're going to discontinue this program. Then the city's left with that fifth officer, that two thirds cost. She's still having, that's where I was going with that.
So, I mean, and that's what the twenty eight agreement covers. I mean, obviously if they were to pull out earlier or whatnot, then, you know, that's how it, it's a contract. So, um, you know, they could at the end of the year decide, hey, we don't want to go through with this anymore. And I mean, that's something that can happen. Um, but that's where again, I think, you know, looking at this from the other option of having part-time staff, staff fill those hours. You know, kind of alleviates us from that problem. It gives us a little bit of a, you know, even a trial period. We do that for a year. Uh, we get, we get a chance to see, um, you know, not just for us, but for them. The school district gets to see, does this work for us? We get to see, does this work for, for us? And if it doesn't at the end of that year, we're not really out anything.
Yeah, I don't think you'd want to go into a three year right off the bat at all. And you're talking about part-time.
To fill those hours.
For you, right?
To, well, it's instead of a full-time fifth officer, using part-time officers to fill those hours.
For you, you guys, okay.
For the, for the city, yeah.
And then if something were to happen where they don't do it and she needs to come back here.
We just wouldn't have those part-time officers.
It'd be easier to, it'd be unfortunate, but.
Sure.
I, I get what you're saying about that.
And, and then again, if you. It's the, the financial gain. I mean, if you look at the benefits, I mean, let's just say. The estimate is twenty five thousand dollars a year for the benefits of a full-time new officer. Well, if we're paying. Part-time officers to work, we don't have that twenty five thousand dollar expense. So that takes this number on here even lower by twenty five thousand. So instead of us making maybe some money, we definitely would be, you know, making some money at that time. Um, so we would be doing that at a, a negative cost to the city.
Yes, if I had to say something.
Yeah, I wrote down five issues that it will help if we really get more information. I live the last meeting, as we have collected information, trying to work things out. Tonight, as we speak, I think the three year agreement needs to be discussed. We will at least get more information about it. The users are called, which is something that I am concerned about and if it's going to give me the answer. The participation of two thirds, one third, it needs to be, we need to allow. Our take on to accept two thirds, one third, who wanted to be a hundred percent, that's something. There, my karma is concerned too. And I'm not saying make a decision, we just, this sounds, this, this stuff needs to be talked about. The twenty eight year agreement and the details of it, which is something they've just touched on. How you want it, you want it three years, you want it twenty years, you want to see the participation of the state or whatever, which I understand. Their participation, I'm not concerned about, our participation, how we're going to come up with something. So that's one thing, the fifth officer, is it full-time, out time? He gave you the two options now between giving the out time a chance where we don't have to pay more. All that will help me, this is the five items that I think we need to work on, that will help me and help them. We're going to come to a conclusion, you know, of how come up with a group proposal. Meeting with the school, I think it's a good idea to, I think it will be beneficial for both of us. Once we have bought my own, that at least we get to know who they get to know us. We became partners on what we discussed. Uh, there will be nothing to, uh, be shy about talking about it to them. And I think they are a good group, I haven't met them before, but I'm willing to have that meeting too. So there is the analysis of what we've been doing, everyone I talked a lot about it, for hour and a half, two hours. Uh, and I think we good will talk about it tonight to get the information to the council and what the need of more information. To allow us to make this. Uh, budgeting wise, that's something can be considered when we talk about the twenty eight year agreement and all this stuff. So I think we're all aware now of the goal. We, I don't see any opposition here on the council side. I think there's just a lot of details.
Could this be something that, uh, could start semester two? So it would align with our budget?
Yes.
So something that they would start mid-January and go. It, it would still be a year, but it essentially started with semester two, summer semester one of the next year. I guess it would align better maybe with the city.
Yes.
That would give us time to get our ducks in a row, get their ducks in a row, come to an agreement. I, I, I'm just saying it would start then essentially twenty, twenty-five.
And I wrote it down here, very, very good point because we start with our budget in December, that's four or five months from now. Probably by next month we'll be, we'll be asking what the budget will be. So we're coming close to the budget, the school will be out next month, the end of next month. So you have the summer, the three months, so it can line up with our budget, like what Dorian, uh, could. We, I think we can make, we can get into that, we can make. It's just the details to be ironed out, we're all on the same base. Because we're already looking at it from different directions.
And really, you know, and, and I have nothing against what you put out here, but I, I got to be my own age on, on numbers and stuff, so we're kind of waiting for that.
Yes.
And, and that's the only thing, so, uh, I, I, I think it's a beneficial thing, yeah.
Yeah. And I think it's beneficial. I think it's good. You just need to work the details, work the numbers and make a work.
So, sorry, I didn't catch up. Um, so I mean, going back to that, you know, I just, I need to know what. You guys would like me to speak with the council about, or the, the school board about. The hundred percent thing, I just want to real quick touch on that. I think that there's. Maybe it's the wording that we're using to, to discuss that that's incorrect. The school's willing to pay a hundred percent of the portion that she's going to be at the school. That is the two thirds of what we're asking for. So they're already paying a hundred percent of, of what they would be benefiting from this. So it'd be hard for me to go ask them for more than that because they're not benefiting any more than that. Um, what, what I'm asking for is the one third that would cover the time where she isn't working in the schools. And that, I believe by these numbers is covered. Um, so it already is a hundred percent.
Dave, I want to respond to that.
Sure.
And I think that is, that just, it would be my way of, I'm negotiating, you know. And I don't want to say it on air now because we need to meet with the school board and meet heavily. But one thing that I'm thinking about is if they cover a hundred percent of the salary, who will buy the car? Who will buy the insurance? Who will buy the work comp? The gas, you see, it will be the same, but it will help me and the school budget. That's what we talked about when we meet with them. That if they cover the hundred percent of the salary, who will cover the car and the gas and the cell phone and, uh, work comp and insurance? That's how, I, probably the school board will be understanding what I'm saying. Or the person who's in charge of the budgeting will understand and meet with me on this.
Sure.
Because really, when it gets into budgeting, it takes a lot of, uh, you know, uh, of ways to handle it. Maybe when we meet with them, we'll talk about that. I'm just giving you the ways that I look at it. And probably the school will be looking at it the same way. It'll be much easier for them. A much. Can I work it out this way? But we don't want to go into details in that right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not trying to go into details. All I'm trying to say is that I think the split is already where it's going to be. Uh, you know, whether we break that up into all those little issues, that's what the contracts were. All, all those things are already in the contract. You know, who covers what, who covers, you know, insurance, cypers, all those things. We've already got that stuff laid out. We're just talking about percentage of the time where that, that officer is working for the city. In a, in a position for the city or a position for the school. So all that's all, the only reason I bring that up is I don't think that's something I can necessarily go to the school board and say, hey, we, we want you to pay for more of that. The other things, I didn't quite catch all five of the, the list, but I'm willing to put them down and we, we can discuss them with the school board.
Yes.
Uh. Okay, the three year thing, and then you mentioned maybe not three years.
I have mentioned that.
Okay.
Well, right off the bat, I, you know, I would be concerned if they do three years right off the bat and lock us into something. You know, like you said, it's always best to wet your feet a little bit, see how it goes. Maybe everybody goes, huh. I don't see that happening, but you give yourself, uh, an out on that. As far as doing stuff, so I don't know a whole lot what other SROs do or whatever, but. You know, I know she'll be there through the school year when they're actively in school. What, what about through the summer? I mean, could she work stuff for the school for the, through the summer and events like that or, or anything like that? Where she would be utilized the whole year round?
And realistically, I don't think that's, that's a doable thing.
I, I don't know, you know, I mean, that thunderstorm, I don't know.
But.
What the school would be like.
So it's three years.
Yep.
Issue, the car issue.
And what specifically about the car issue? The, the fuel and the.
The police officer will be taking the city car without any modification from the. Uh, school because that was the issue that the mayor was bringing up and he wanted to know.
So.
If they come back to see it on the cost of the car, the cost of the gas, the wear and tear.
The fuel and maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. We have to purchase a vehicle, another vehicle? No, not currently. So.
We're not going to buy a hazard car.
Currently I use one of the night officers cars already.
Okay, no, I'm just writing down.
I'm just letting you know like how I get there right now.
I'm taking notes for myself, nobody's getting new car.
He usually doesn't miss it too much. So, um, it's back looking, so.
I, I, as I made the number three now, I'm giving you what I wrote down. The participation, the two thirds, one third, a hundred percent, no. This, we need to, we need to talk about it. Not necessarily that we're making decisions, it just needs to be talked about. My idea is to give you, the police officer, he takes the salary, I take the car and gas and. Wear and tear and work comp and damage to the car, maintenance, all that stuff. So I'm participating too, but the budgeting person in the school needs to talk to me about it. Maybe we can work things out on this. So that's one number three. Number four will be the fifth officer, part-time or full-time? Because as you mentioned, part-time will save some money, we can apply that to the cost of something else. So we need to clarify that. Are you willing, I mean, so that's up to you, they're not there, whether we're going to have part-time or full-time, but you and I need to talk about it. I think we did.
Yeah, I mean.
We haven't decided yet.
Well, I mean, I, what I left to add was that if we needed to do part-time positions, that's fine with me.
And I was good with that.
So I think that is, that part's already kind of been figured out.
Okay, and then budget, the timing, you know, when we're gonna time this with the school? Like Dolly said, you know, when we're gonna time it? So I'm, I'm having all the consultant, all the person and the mayor, I'm trying to put him here, came to five or six items for me. And the twenty eight year agreement is the last thing where we can detail this whole thing after the discussion and all this stuff. Detail it in the twenty eight year agreement where once we sign it, we're done, that subject is no. It's not a subject to discussion anymore. So then you can give that to the school. I'm sure she would be happy to hear this. If he's listening to me now, I didn't mean any of decision or anything. I'm giving the way that I see sent the night and budgeting and all this stuff. I'm sure the, the budget person in the school, highly qualified, will understand what I'm coming for. And maybe we'll work things out.
Kaman, did you have a question?
I do because I feel like there's, either I'm like misunderstanding something, but just to clarify, you're a full-time city employee, Sergeant Kaisner, still?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Um, so. You would still have a city vehicle because you're still working for the city, you're just going somewhere else. It was, it's really no different than going to a call on an interstate or over in Menlo or like that's the same wear and tear on the car. Yeah. Um, there are a couple of other things. Um, there's, there are some counties that maybe one. That does a hundred percent SRO program, but that, I don't know, I was doing some research. Just looking through the stuff and they, please correct me if I'm wrong, but. That SRO is just in the school. They've got summers and all that holidays and stuff off. They don't work in the city.
So, and I would like to touch on this hundred percent thing because I, I'm a member of Iowa SRO. I'm a member of NASRO, which is National Association Sports Officer. My next goal is to be nationally certified as a practitioner. So this is, this is my, this is my niche. I look at SROs and trust me, I know Lynn's announced it. It is a specialty position much like a K nine, a detective, you name it. Um, I found two hundred percent contracts and I'm of one, Sioux County, which I said to you guys. That is a hundred percent funded by the county. The other one is Adams County and that is a fantastic hundred percent by the city. That SRO has two hundred and forty comp hours in the summer. You don't get, you don't get me back because I'm going to be on break. Um, Johnson has a very similar awesome program. Um, you work extra football games, you work extra events, proms, you count those hours. You don't see them back on patrol for some of these cities. So I think that is something to just think of is, I, I, I've got, you know, the emails. Hey, Iowa School Research Association, do you have, do you have any contacts? Can you post it out on our Facebook page? I didn't get answers for those. So, um, same, you know, similar things with vehicles. Um, I think every contract we sent was, the vehicles are included. So, but the contracts are very. They, they can be, they can be crafted. That, that's why every single one's different.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but so when, after the meeting, it was asked of us to find any hundred percent contracts going both ways. And so she reached out to the state level, uh, to all of the SROs that she has access to and asked. And I believe the only ones that came back that were hundred percent, were hundred percent funded by the law enforcement department, right? Were there any schools?
Adams County's one, but that's the one where, um, they don't work in the summer. They don't go back to patrol. I mean, for the most part, I'm still kind of waiting for some more answers, but you know, when they're hiring, it's, you know, take home vehicle, this. Great Curbs, two hundred and forty hour comp hours in the summer, things like that. Those, those are not really comparable to what we're looking for because. I just want to make sure I understand. It's like, as Caitlin was saying, I'm a hundred percent a city employee. Sixty-seven percent of the year, I would be at the school, a hundred percent funded by the school. Thirty-three percent of the year, I would be a patrol officer, a hundred percent funded by the city. And that's why that thirty-three percent, it doesn't make sense to ask the other towns. Because why would they help kind of fund that thirty-three percent or I'm just going here? They're not going to get a patrol officer at any time of the year. Um, I would never really have a reason to go, Menlo, they don't have a school at all. So, I mean, those are, those are some things, like when you actually need, you break it down, it's not, oh, sixty-seven, it's. Sixty-seven is thirty-four point four, uh, weeks of the year. That's the number I got from the school district. They were very finite on that. You know, they're like, we would need you thirty-four point four weeks of the year. That's the days the school students are in session. So that's why, and if you do the math on that, it's about sixty-six point some percent. Three thirds. So that, I just want you to know that's where they got their number from. So I think what he's kind of asking is. If you want us to kind of renegotiate, we need a little guidance, so.
Yeah, because at, at this point, the way I look at this is the school basically saying, we're willing to reimburse the police department for the time that the SRO is doing city work at the schools. This, we're not, we're not asking, the school's not saying, we want her to be our employee. The, the school's saying, we're willing to let her still be a city employee, still be a police officer, still be handling city business just in a different location. And they're willing to reimburse us for the cost of that while she's there. Now, there are certain duties that she would do there that she doesn't do as a police officer for the city. There, she might teach some classes, she might help out on the counseling side. There's things that, that, you know, that they're, they're getting a benefit from, having her there as a full-time employee. But it's not that she's gonna just all of a sudden disappear from our workforce and we don't get to use her anymore, her, her services. She's working for the police department when she's there. She's still wearing the same uniform, she's still got the same title. The only difference is the school's saying, hey, we're willing to reimburse you for some of this because we're starting to see the fact that you guys are out here all the time and, and in need. Um, and, and they see the, the need for having that full-time program. So, uh, as far as that whole hundred percent goes, again, the way I look at it is roughly to cover the costs, to have part-time staff cover the hours that she would need to cover if she were to go full-time in the schools, would cost us roughly seventy thousand dollars a year. And actually, if you take the benefits off of that, it's much less than that. The school's willing to reimburse us sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. I'm not a math major in college or anything like that, but I think that's pretty easy to, to decide how this works. Uh, there's no hidden fees here, other than the fact that yes, there will be some fuel costs and some maintenance costs to vehicles. Um, which, as I said before, uh, right now with our current contract with the school, it pays five dollars an hour. If we did the math on that, that'd be seven thousand dollars a year. We would have to ask them to increase their portion if we wanted the same level of reimbursement that they're giving us now. Maybe they'd agree to that, I don't know. I haven't brought that up to them yet. But, but at the end of it, at the end of the discussion, I just, I don't think it's, I think we're trying to overcomplicate this and I don't think there's a reason to. But, uh, it, it's pretty simple math to me. Um, I'm willing to have these conversations, but like Officer Geisinger said, Sergeant Geisinger, sorry, I need some direction because I can't just go to this next school board meeting and say, well, they had five things for me to bring up, but I don't really know exactly what they want of these five things. They just asked me to bring them up. So, yeah, are, are we talking about forming a committee? Are you guys willing to go with me to this meeting? I mean, what, what does this look like? Because I can't just go up to them and, and say, here's my, my questions. You see what I mean? I think Ash is willing to sit down with like Mr. Shockley and specifically Samantha Crawford. Probably to go over this, because he's not saying that the school needs to, he's saying, look at it as a hundred thousand dollars, right? The school, we're gonna have fees and, and when you say there's no hidden fees, well, we're paying insurance, we're paying.
The school is paying, the school is paying sixty-seven percent of my benefit package.
So, so.
So that, that can mitigate some of what I heard up here.
If I were to hire a full-time officer at our current salaries, right now, benefit package and, so that's insurance, that's iPers, that's everything. And the salary would equal seventy thousand dollars. There's no other stuff that we have to include, like radios, anything. We'll, there's no other expenses that we have to. We don't have to buy a vehicle. We have, we have surplus radios. The, the training would be for a full-time officer, which we, we've never budgeted once since I've worked here for that.
It's expensive, the city.
Sure, but it would be an expense if I had to hire. Sure, but if I lost an officer tomorrow and had to hire an officer tomorrow, it's an expense. So it, it's, it's not a, you know, and like a.
Different. That's.
I mean, I think, and like I said, just, just to finish that topic. Like I said, with a, with a part-time staff, there is no academy training, there is no benefits, there is none of those things.
Part-time, yes.
Yeah, with a part-time staff.
Yes, and that's what we need to talk about.
And that's, I've already, I think we've already discussed that. That's all I'm trying to say.
But, and I'll make it super quick. And, and here's a, kind of a simple way to look at it. You're not paying for her when she's in school. You're paying for her in the summer when she's here. Do you take your vacation time when you're at work? Do you get vacation time at work?
I do.
I, and so do the rest of you, and you take it when you want to, right? I don't know, since I was on council or even now, if the officers are ever take all of their vacation that they're allowed, and if they don't take it, do they get paid out? Probably not. So if she is extra in the summer, that's ensuring that your officers are getting the time off that they need to be with their families and take that extra vacation time. Because I know there's times where they come at the end of the year and they need five thousand dollars more because we've had to, they've had to pay for people to come in so they can take vacation. Or at Good Eight Days, you're paying extra for officers to be out when she's available during that summertime. So it gives the officers and that ten thousand dollars plus some the time that they need to take their vacation time that they're allowed to take, that they're probably not fully taking right now. Just saying, and, and it, I don't think it restricts her from working just days. I mean, she could cover nights when the night officers need off. So they can take their vacation time. So it, I think it evens out if you're looking at just the summer, I think. Some people are getting wrapped around like the whole bigger picture. You're really just needing to look at that summertime portion, because that's what you're paying for. But what are you saving when you have other people off and she's covering by not having to pay that out of that ten thousand or even extra?
And just to piggyback off that real quick, I mean, yeah, so if we, if you look at it from a part-time perspective, not a full-time perspective, you can take the benefits out of that equation. Um, so you're saving the roughly twenty-five thousand dollars right there off the top. You add the fact that, you know, the vacation time, like Christine was bringing up, that we say that we're currently already spending. Currently, every, every year, we have to spend overtime money to pay officers to come work for officers when they're on vacation. She would then now be able to cover some of those hours. So we save money there. So there's a savings there. When you add all of that up, and this is including all of the insurance, all of the iPers, all of that stuff. Again, part-time staff, so no training expenses, no academy, no vehicle costs. We're literally talking about a negative number here after our reimbursement. I don't see how that's, you know, a topic for discussion, but all I wanna say is I'm, like I said, I'm willing to go talk about these things. I just need some direction. The part-time, full-time thing, that's not an issue to talk to the school board about. We've already made that decision. Uh, you know, the twenty-eight year agreement, I'm pretty sure they were happy with what it covered. I think you guys haven't brought up any issues on what it covers. Uh, you know, three-year contract, I, I see the benefits to those things. I don't think that they would mind having a conversation about that. Um, you know, the fuel and maintenance issue, again, I said, I don't have a problem talking to them about that. The one-third, two-third thing, I, I think they're already pretty set that they're, they're covering what they feel they should cover at two-thirds.
Okay, Sean? I just want, like, to kind of follow with what you said, if you guys are gonna ask the school to pay a hundred percent of her salary, you can assume you have just lost a police officer. That the next person, the fifth officer, will be one hundred percent paid by you and including all of their benefits, because you won't have her to offset any of those costs. But if you're asking them to pay a hundred percent of her, she is one hundred percent theirs and not your guys'. So, I mean, yeah, she's, like you said, she has to be a member here, use any of those benefits. So that one-third that you guys are paying is, is like you said, to offset that cost. So, I mean, those, Adams County pays their person a hundred percent and they don't do anything for the city. So if they have to train a new person, city's paying for that. If they need to get a new, you know, you probably need another vehicle because you now have five officers that need, uh, uh, vehicles. City's not paying for that, or the school's not paying for that, the city is. So, I mean, paying that one-third is the offset of the rest of those costs. So, I mean, you can ask them to pay a hundred percent, but if I were the school and I'm not, so I don't speak for them, that's what they're gonna tell you. If, then, she doesn't work for the city, realistically. Technically, yes, but, so just, I mean, make any decision, one, but I think that that's, to me, when I was hearing the discussion, that's kind of what was being missed, was that, oh, can we do this and this and this? Well, no, if they're paying a hundred percent of that cost. So just something to consider.
Thank you.
And, and did you have a question? I'm sorry. Did you have a statement?
No.
You're the, okay. I, I didn't know if you rose your, I thought you raised your hand, sorry.
I'm just listening.
I think even guidance on, I mean, you're talking fuel and maintenance, um, he made a little joke, he doesn't have a math degree. Um, I'll make a little joke, I do. That was my minor. So, so number, number, um, I think, I, I like numbers, you know, they, they don't have emotions, they are, they are finite, they are a number. Um, who just knows how I ended up with criminal justice and a math degree. Uh, so, I mean, fuel, I mean, you're talking, I would not probably go to Redfield five days a week, but I did the math on if I were to go five days a week. You know, thirty mile round trip, thirty-four point four weeks of the year. Boom, boom. Divided by average three dollars and fifty cents a gallon. We are literally talking at, I think it's around a thousand and sixty-two dollars. So, that's, that is, that is a finite math number. So, now can that go up? And now I'm sure, do I have to, is there something, did I go to Redfield once and, oh, there's an emergency or they need something from me? Sure. Is there two days that I, I might not go there? Absolutely. Um, so, but I, I did the higher average of, okay, let's say I went there five days a week. So, you know, when you say fuel, I think a little more guidance on that of, well, what, what are you looking for? Or, you know, what's the state reimbursement on mileage? Do I keep track of mileage? Because those are things we ask for contracts, it's not, we want you to pay for fuel. Well, how much? You know, the mileage, what is the actual, you know, current state reimbursement? You know, last time I actually did mileage, it was a point five 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 a mile. So, I mean, those are things, when you get to contracts, I mean, those are the details, that's what you're asking for. So I guess we would probably just need a little bit more of what those details would look like.
It would be much easier if I could go back to the school district and say, here's the city's response. They want you to reimburse us however much per mile for fuel. And they would like you to do this and this, and then we can get their answer. I feel my, my fear is if I go there right now and they ask me any of these questions, I'm gonna say, I don't know the answer to those questions. And then I'm gonna come back here and I'm gonna present stuff to you that doesn't help you make any decisions. So I would like to have some answers on what exactly you would like me to present to the council, or to the, the school board that is on this list so that I can, you know, come back with an answer from them. That's, I guess, my request from you. And it doesn't have to be made right here or right now, but I think that it needs to, we need to have that conversation before the next school board meeting so that we don't miss that opportunity.
Wednesday, maybe?
I, you remember?
Usually, um.
Second Wednesday.
She's a second Wednesday, so.
Do you have enough stuff? Ash, if you and Chief got together?
Yeah, I have it here.
Okay.
I didn't know, when you just said you'd like to have some answers, you don't need it right here, right now. Can we leave it there? Ash just got that. Give it to you, second Wednesday, you said?
It's next Wednesday.
That's what it's kind of about, so.
I mean, really, I think the main issue is, what do you guys, what, what would be fair for fuel and maintenance expenses? And then the rest, I think we've pretty much, you know, figured out. I mean, I can ask them for a three-year contract and they can say yes or no. Um, I can ask them for, you know, the, the one-third, two-thirds to be increased, but we already tried that. We asked them for seventy-five percent and they knocked it down to two-thirds, so they've already kind of given us their answer on that one.
And, and please, I, I'm not trying to force you into knowing that, that here's the question of why they, so, um, something like that, so, just.
All I'm saying is I just don't wanna waste our time by me asking for something that they're gonna say no to.
I mean, did you wanna know why they said in order of seventy-five, twenty-five or?
I, I think we can kind of.
Cover it.
Okay, just making sure.
Because.
I was at that meeting too, I, I have the answer.
I, I would like you to present it to them in a definite fashion. That's my concern. Instead of seventy-five, twenty-five or whatever two set, one set is, you covers a hundred percent of the salary, who covers the, that cash, which are you know, we have talked about work comp, we have talked about using the car, hundred percent. Gas, uh, cell phone, wear and tear on the car, all these things. If you ask the budgeting person in the school, she will understand what I'm talking about.
Ash, is there a conversation you can have with Samantha tomorrow?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a point, I'm just trying to respond to her. If he's the one going to talk, I have no problem. I'm asking for the meeting since we started all the discussion. But I'm trying to give Dave answers to all these questions. We need to just present it to them in a definite fashion. So budgeting person will understand what I'm talking about. And she is willing to say yes or no, that's her answer. Just we need to present it this way. Bookkeeping, it will be much easier. The eight hundred percent and we all the other benefit. Cars and wear and tear and work comp and all these things that I have a list of it. If the budgeting person got this from you, she might have different answer to it. She might tell you, right, I, I, no. She might tell you, think about it, I don't know. Because you did the negotiation, I didn't do.
Sure. Like, I guess what is confusing me is her salary will be sixty-seven, five hundred next year.
Whatever it is, whatever it is.
That's what they're reimbursing us.
They're already.
They're already giving us a hundred percent of her.
I understand, he can't take the whole back, the hundred percent and leave me with the car and.
That's what they're currently willing to do. That's what I'm trying to explain.
We, we're trying to make it, the numbers are on the big bookkeeping. Just take this, I'll take this. Instead of two set, one set, and I go two set, the one set been here, you know, that's how I was working. We wanna make it clear so everyone sitting, even in the audience there, we're confusing them. But if we tell the audience them.
No, I think if you just, I think if you just call Samantha tomorrow.
And I understand, I understand this, but just.
What it is.
They want to go back.
Call Samantha, she'll be able.
They want to go back and do that. And that's his option because he is the department head. We can't take that away from him.
I'm not asking you to take it away from him. I'm just saying, why can't you call her and then work it out with him instead of like sitting here.
I would be going over, and that's not fine.
Can we?
For lose the chain of command. He has a chain of command, he's the one talking about it. I can't tell him that I'm gonna go talk to somebody without his permission.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest. You and you work together and have a meeting. Would you be willing to work with Ash to talk to the budget director of the school? And if you don't wanna explain what Ash is saying, have Ash explain that. How, to, to, to get it cleared out. That way.
Sure.
You said, you got, okay, there you got your permission.
I, I, again, I don't have a problem having a meeting at all. I'm just, I guess the, the issue that I'm coming up with is it's the same dollar amount that we're talking about. So, they've already agreed to, to reimburse us for that same dollar amount. So in my mind, that answer has already been given to us. So I don't understand why we're being asked to renegotiate something that they're already willing to reimburse us for. That's my only concern.
I mean, this is.
Am I willing to sit through the meeting? Absolutely. I, I'm.
I don't think he's asking you to renegotiate. I just think they're just talking the way the money actually exchanges between the city and.
I think it's gonna be a lot simpler. Sure, again, I, I don't have a problem.
I'd like, I'd like it. Do you mind if I have two of the council members with me? Do you need this session?
I don't like that at all.
I would like to see Dorian and Kalba with me. You can start this my friendly discussion of how I see bookkeeping, how the school sees the bookkeeping of the SROs. We all, as I'm hearing, liking the idea, we all work for it, we're not in any kind of argument. We're just trying to do it as council members and administrators to the best interest of the city. And the school will do it to the best interest of the school. But we're both agreeing on the benefit of the program. Am I making sense now? Um, how I want it to be.
Yeah, like I said, I'm.
Does the council mind if I have council member Dorian and Kalba working with me throughout the process? To make it easier, so we'll come back to the council. Let's all have done. Can you use that?
Yeah.
Great. So let's have it this way, Dave. You and I, two council members, will kind of try to work together to iron out all these things, which I'm not seeing any difficulties here. It's just a matter of how we do the bookkeeping, how we do the budget. We wanna do it in our budget time. I don't know what the school budget time, but it, from what I'm hearing, is the same like us. First of all, I will somebody collect me. Okay, so I'm gonna assume it's the same. So if we work out all these details, go to their budget and our budget, all set and done. That's maybe my, my concern about. I don't have any opposition to the program. Actually, I like it. I think I want it to have it, but I'm hearing three, four, five different angles of council members. I load them down and I'm gonna keep, keep them to discuss it down the road when we have the kind of meeting on that. Feel good with that, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay. You counsel, any question?
All right.
All right.
Please, do you have a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Um, might it be advisable and maybe not to include council members that have children in the school district on that comp comp?
I actually, if I can respond to you. I thought, what we're trying to do is not emotional. I don't want emotional thing into it.
I, I don't either. I don't.
This is my, we would do it, that's all. If they're emotional, if you ask me, I'll say, this sounds like. say, this sounds like twenty-eight year agreement tomorrow and do it. But we sit here to represent the city. He sits there to represent the school. Why don't we get together to talk?
You got your two financial guys there, that's all you need, just let them know.
And, and just work it out. No emotion. It's not about having kids or not. My kids all grown up. It, that, that doesn't mean I'm gonna be against the program.
No, I don't get asked to, I'm just asking a question.
No, I have an answer to you. I don't need emotional, I need business minded people. And those two are business minded people, you know? If any of them wanna come instead of others, I, what I mean here, I think you have kittens.
Huh? I do something.
Any more?
I think you go on, they go. They're over.
Anyway, we will move in, I have an answer, you question. Okay.
All right. Number sixteen, Stewart Development Director.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna start off with a couple items from my report. All Saints House Development, uh, down to two lots, we have recently received two offers on lot twenty-five. I'll see what becomes of those. Just last week, I went out to DMAC, Coach Day, seminar regarding new programs to assist communities with economic development. Uh, one is a new English learners program to help employers provide English classes for employer, employers or employees who don't speak English. And they have, they are also implementing a competency-based learning program that they'd like to e-gon development, people to spread out to employers. So, I thought that was a pretty interesting meeting. So, it gives us another tool, another resource to help employers. Our Iowa Living Roadways Community Divisioning Program manager Brad Riphagen and I were supposed to have a meeting with Iowa DOT, Guthrie County Streets or Supervisor and Hadera County and Stewart Public Works. Unfortunately, Stewart Public Works was only in either part of the time because he was backup for some rescue and got called out a couple of times. And then, uh, Hadera County showed up for the meeting, so we'll have to have another meeting with that. So, our Living Roadways Community Divisioning Program kind of slowed down a little bit, but we did make a little bit of progress, but hopefully make a little more progress and then have another meeting with the steering committee here in about another month or so. Uh, next, I'd like to add that we're, uh, gonna be conducting the third annual Women's Entrepreneur Event, the Empower Her Summit for Women Entrepreneurs. That will be April twenty-fourth, and we have Debbie Durham from the Iowa Economic Development Authority being our main speaker. Uh, we have a capacity of fifty seats for that, and we are currently at twenty-three that are already reserved. So, I think that's a pretty good accomplishment with, uh, about another two and a half weeks for that. Next, I want to go into, uh, marketing. Our city's social media campaign has achieved a remarkable success, a sensitive view. Um, we, as Nathan mentioned in the last meeting, we've engaged twenty-three thousand users at that time and then additionally seventy-two hundred individuals who visited our city's Facebook profile during that period. Uh, so with that, I'd like to go into, if you've had an opportunity to review the marketing program, often again, one of the things I like, or some of the things I'd like to say is that, uh, videos transcend into a geographical boundaries. Uh, it enables us to showcase Stewart and the potential entrepreneurs, investors, tourists worldwide. Uh, tailoring videos to specific audiences allows us to highlight matters most to the city of Stewart. We're able to promote, uh, available land, whether it's for housing, local businesses. Videos offer retailing that captures the history and charm of Stewart, creates an emotional connection. So, uh, quality videos, uh, investing in high-quality production is crucial and, uh, polished video leaves a lasting positive impression. So, they're just asking me to consider the marketing proposal, um, that they did.
Are you asking for a vote on it?
Yes.
What did we hear from Hotel Motel?
Uh, that they don't look into those grants or they don't review those applications until the fifteenth of April. So, that's...
Wasn't that our request the last time? Was it have it applied for that?
We had Dylan Gill tax and he reached out to them. And we also asked for the utility.
Right, we know the utility's answer.
The utility...
Which is fine.
Yes.
It wasn't in their budget.
Yes.
Uh, which is fine. But I thought we asked for it to be applied for, for the Hotel Motel before we had an answer?
Yes.
That's next week.
Uh, that'll, that's when they accept applications. I don't know when they'll come back with the results. Like, another month after that.
Usually come by me. We have a move before the end of the fiscal year, and then we base it at the beginning of the fiscal.
I don't know if this is that big of a rush to have to decide on that time.
What did we do? We were with them last year, uh, wasn't it May or June or something?
Yeah, mine.
Usually it was in December.
I mean, I would hope the people on that board would understand that that, you know, could increase traffic into the local hotels, you know, and stuff, create people. I think we can wait until we don't. I don't know about anybody else.
And what, no question on it?
Yeah. Sounds good, Cory.
He has another item.
Yep, and then, uh, next is a, uh, housing development, uh, I'm sorry, a, a small housing site. There's six lots, the, the land that the city currently owns by North Seventh and North Harrison, North Seventh and North Harrison. Two, uh, separated into two parcels, but the goal is to, uh, maybe utilize some of the, uh, dirt from current construction projects in the community. Uh, so, there's a storm drain easement to go through there that would need a little bit of filled dirt. Uh, the goal would be to utilize, uh, Bunkford and Kim, we've, uh, accepted, or C had accepted a couple, uh, proposals from a couple of engineering firms, and Bunkford was chosen to come up with, uh, or do, uh...
What you're asking is, they're gonna do a study to see if it's useful to build stuff on this, right? Basically?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, so, the goal went to have, turn that into property that would, homes, then could be tax revenue for the city.
So, my question is, the city is trying to cost for this study. Is there any way, I mean, normally I would think that would be a developer who would come in and do that feasibility study, correct? Under normal circumstances?
Yes, yep. So, so developer can be city or it can be an individual.
Correct. But I mean, especially if this was turned into multifamily, I wouldn't see the city wanting to manage kind of an association, so to speak, to manage, you know, the shared structure that has to go along with a multifamily-type unit. So, it most likely to be a private development or something that would do this. Is there any way we could then turn around and apply those costs to whoever constructs this? Or is it something more we're looking at, like kind of building a, a site-ready type, you know, ready-to-dig sort of scenario where we're funding these engineering costs and they could just come in and say, yep, we can design this and put this on there?
So, it'd be, we could potentially sell the property to them and get a return that way. Um, or utilize it as an opportunity to collect, uh, once the property taxes are collected, use that as our source of revenue.
I mean, have we, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, have we had interest in anybody developing any sort of multifamily there or?
It... The, a couple of builders have freaked out to me about it. Um, I'm taking names, you know, um, people that are interested in townhomes. Um, I see a, a big demand for it. I think other people have heard from many other people just recently, um, trying to take down names on people. That's risky though, because if somebody says, yeah, I want a townhome today, are they, is that same person still gonna be here in two years? Um, are they gonna have, or finding something else already by that time? So, people are hesitant to say, yeah, sign me up for one of those, and it might be here in two years. So...
So, it's, it's really pretty much what we have in view up here for a while. They go in, they look at the stuff, say this, you know, this is what it's gonna take to be able to build here. Would that be correct? Of course. And then Samantha Holmes comes in and, I don't think we'd be giving that away for free. I don't know how we would do it.
That's to be discussed.
So, that's something down the road. But I think, you know, at some point, it's like, what, seven thousand dollars or something to do that site study on here to see if we can, if it's even feasible. I don't know. Okay.
Is that, I mean, just reading through the information here, I didn't know how to take that, if we was just looking for developers or if it was something like we're doing out here, we're tipped with paper and all that, and then we just, kind of like what Mike said, just give away the lots? Where are you kind of going with this? Or are you just wanting to have B K just look at the site?
Right now, everything else is to be decided. Uh, you know, uh, city council members are invited to attend seat meetings. All of this would be to discuss.
He's just wanting to say, hey, is this a place we could possibly put some homes? Or being given a sense that, that, you know, it's gonna be too costly or whatever. It's something you just can't build in homes there, you know, on it, you know?
I think it addresses the need.
I don't think, that's going to be able to tell that, but just hiring somebody to say, yeah, you could build there, this is what it'd take, et cetera, et cetera.
So, I believe, uh, Forrest or Reese and Kim would be able to help, uh, come up with some renderings or a better vision of what we could have out there.
And I think that's in, in here, if I read that right, you can get some, uh, concepts and stuff.
Is that something we want to tackle right now with, we have forty lots and then we have the next phase already kind of laid out of that for fifteen-ish more lots?
Yeah. Well, we don't have any townhomes.
I am.
And not everybody can afford a three-hundred-dollar house.
I know, I just, I'm just saying, so. I still don't...
And, and this is, remember, this is just to study it. If he says, you don't, you don't have to build on it right now. You don't have to do anything. You know, you could wait, or you could look at it and say, okay, this is what we're going to do. Because we don't necessarily have to do what we're doing out here. You know, it doesn't have to be similar to that at all, you know? We, he's just proposing that we have, uh, B K come in, look at it, tell us if it's viable, and then see where we want to go after that.
Yeah.
Because we won't be able to do it until we know if we can do anything there.
Like, can, now we're out with seventy-six hundred bucks.
So, you're...
So, there is that.
So, no, we've never, we're paying, uh, for it's, I don't know, I don't know what it's cost to mow it, but it's continued maintenance. It ain't earning us anything at the moment. And it, it's one step. I mean, either way, if we want to address the need for some, a little bit more of an affordable housing, some townhomes, if we want to address that, this is the first stage. Either way, if you're gonna do it now, or do it later, you can kick the can down the road, this step still needs to be addressed. This is a great site for this.
I'm, I'm not, not against it. I guess my opinion is, I'd rather just wait a little bit, let's get this one up and going, let's get some lots filled, see how things are going out here before we look at something else. That's my opinion.
Uh, this still doesn't address the need for the townhomes. We're still having a strong demand for townhomes.
And, and I get what you're saying. It is a very big project we got going on here, nobody doubts that. But if you do the feasibility study and they come back and say, this is what it would take to build here, then you say, we're gonna pause, we're gonna wait, maybe a year or two.
Why can't you just sell the lots?
That could be an option.
See, there's all kinds of options too.
Then you don't have anything, and then it's their problem. And if they want to build, they can build.
That's what Craig was saying, too.
Yeah, I mean...
So, the storm easement is sending me a deterrent of, uh, I don't know if anybody else knows from what I've heard, do just correct me if I've heard this wrong, that another builder had gone in there with hopes to build and there was too many challenges and gifted it back to the city? I don't know if that's correct.
Uh, no, I do.
That's...
I don't know.
That's true.
No.
Not, not some type of...
So, but I think they've been under a city's possession for quite a while.
Where would this come out of?
Uh, I don't know. That's kind of, that don't ask me because I'm in the mood of messing it backwards. But, I understand, seventy-six hundred is not a big number. It's, uh, you, we can't take it into care now, so it's gonna just come out of the general problem. If that answer...
That's honest. There's, there's your honest answer. So, you, you weigh the, the possibility that you could build on it, have something grow out of it, you could do, put it up for sale. You just gotta decide which one you want to do. I'm almost leaning towards a put it up for sale. I don't know the last time it was up for sale. You know?
So, but it'd be a lot easier to sell it if, you know...
If you had somebody look, so, there you go. So, that's, if, if they looked at it, assessed it, said yes, you know, then...
We could add...
Probably sell it easier, yes. So, this is my sense.
Could we, could we ask and get the answer to that question? You said that someone looked at it before. I'd like to know if that was, that's actually a thing. Could we, could we gain what information we do have on it before we do the study and then?
Okay.
Because I don't know. I don't have an answer. I'm just thinking, if, if they're, hey, this, this happened a while back, Jim's not here, maybe Jim has some crazy, oh, water flows at this many, I don't know. And this is a deterrent, because I'm not opposed to that too. We could spend seventy-six hundred dollars and there's seven lots or whatever it is. And, you know, we just up the lot by eleven hundred dollars apiece, and we've covered our stake if they sell.
Yeah. Yeah, so, well, currently, you'd see, you could sell the phone room for eleven hundred, break even.
Yeah.
So, it's fine to use a sell if you have to.
So, enable it until we find out more information about...
Okay. Okay.
Ash, you figure out some way to magically, five to seventy-six hundred dollars at that time?
We'll call chance.
And where we sit down?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you, man.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Number seventeen, public one.
You want me to go first, are you sure? Go ahead. So, as I was sitting here, I had a realization that when you're out here, you don't really notice it when you're up there. But we spent, and I was debating about maybe ten thousand dollars of a police salary in one breath. And in the second breath, you're allowing your EMS to consider going out to Audubon County to take your EMS service four hours away, in which you allow your public works director to run that EMS, which he has been doing all day today. So, we can't afford to, people work for our EMS, we're losing money by having Jim do it all the time. So, he did no work today, none, because he was running EMS all day. So, now you're saying, oh, yeah, let's look at going to Audubon County, taking those transfers, taking Jim away if he's on, and sending him to Omaha. But you can't give, you're giving the police a hard time over such a, I don't, I just don't understand. And I'm not, I'm just saying this because it just, it makes me so furious that we can in one breath say, EMS, we're gonna allow you to go four hours away, two, three times a day, have your public works director, who you're paying a lot of money to, but you can't have, you, do you understand what I'm saying? It just, it makes no sense to me. It just, it makes no sense to me and I don't want to keep everybody here. I just wanted to state my two cents.
Brief sentence, I'm going to respond to you. I want you to go home. We didn't make any decisions on the rescue.
No, I understand that, but you're considering it. You're thinking of it. You're looking. But what I'm saying is you're looking at it. You're, but you allowed Jim to sit there and run rescue. He's had four or five calls today.
Without getting into details, we just didn't make any decisions. He, oh, hey, we started both.
But why?
Why don't we start it before he need to make real decisions?
The police stuff is an easy thing. The police is an easy thing. You're saving money. Your questions could be answered in a five-minute conversation with Samantha Crawford because Samantha Crawford is wicked smart like you are. And she's going to know the answers to your questions. So we spent an hour talking about something we did need to talk about. But yet you let Jim run rescue all day long, making hundred thousand dollars a year when he should be out fixing our streets and taking care of trees and I just, that's all I'm saying.
Well, how are we doing, guys? I'm late in the window, sorry. I'm here to talk to you today about the letters that I continue to get from the city. I got another fi, I got a final notice Friday. I got a second notice on the first, or on the twenty, seventeenth of January. So when I get my second notice, there was two foot of snow on the ground. There, I don't know what I was expected to do about that. And it said it was inspected on one seventeen. Those pictures are clearly not from one seventeen because we had two feet of snow on the ground. So that's clearly not when this was actually inspected. And then I got my notice. It'd be five days later. And it said it was supposed to be re-inspected five days after that. Then four months later, I get a final notice with the same picture from before with just one extra picture of just some sticks on the ground. Of a little pile of brush I got here and a pile of lumber that I have stacked on a pile of concrete.
When did you, I'm sorry, when did you get your final notice?
Friday.
This past Friday?
Yes. Yes, and I talked to Jim about it. He said that they, you guys have ninety days until Jim takes over COVID enforcement. But this says I have seven days until you come on my property and send me a bill for something that I have been working week after week when it's not cold, not windy. When I am able to go out and work, I am in my yard working. My car boss saw me, not this weekend, last weekend. I had a thirty-foot pine tree fell. I had it cleaned up that weekend. Within five days, I had a whole tree chipped or split up and piled into what little brush I could before our brush dump's even open in town. And that's another thing is I got this letter before our brush dump in town even opens.
Is that for the, the sticks and stuff?
So, so, okay, I'll go ahead and, so here's, here's my second notice. That's the one I got in January with, with this exact picture that they also said be this way. And, or, and then that was the only added focus. And all I can see from this picture is the progress that I have made on my property.
I was just going to ask you, how many more days do you think you have? Because I drove by your property the other day and I think your mom was over there helping you as well. I think it was Saturday, Sunday.
Well, and so was it, was it this?
Yeah, this past week, yes.
A tree fell. I had, I had a tree fall right in that concrete pad, so it, it split out into two trees. And half of the right side fell. And when I was looking at it further, I realized the entire thing was dead. And where the two trees come together is split all the way to the ground. And thought the only logical thing to do was just drop both sides before I ended up coming home when one half was in the street or something. Or someone was walking by and it falls. So I went ahead and I took care of that this weekend. It's, I, I've been trying to take care of it every weekend, but we were in a burn ban for two months. And then, I mean, after that, it got really windy and I can't burn them either.
I guess in my opinion, I'm okay with progress.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If Mike's been driving by your house and seeing you, I saw you this past weekend out there working, I'm good with progress.
So my thing is, is hopefully we can get some common sense on, on COVID enforcement.
And we will because we changed it.
Exactly.
And I talked to Jim. Jim even, he's like, I'm really easy to go along with. He's like, I know you're working on it. He's like.
We changed direction now, seems going to work better. I like you, who's council member, who is that we're going to go with the progress. Okay?
So we're, sorry, go ahead.
So how long do you have of that notice?
So it says I have seven days from the day it was issued, which would have been April fourth, so I'd have to have it cleaned up. Yes, it's April fourth, but I'd have to clean it up by Thursday. If I could have it released this weekend, I should be able to have everything burned up or taken care of. Because I went and borrowed my grandpa's mulcher so I could mulch it up. I got a log splitter so that way I'd be able to split the stumps.
We're going to take you to the council of care. The council, so go ahead, get it done. So we changed the progress, so you got to be happy.
And we appreciate you giving an honest attempt.
Yeah, we're working on it, so.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Double one?
Yep, yep, come on. Well, this is just kind of interactive thing. I'm, I would just like to hear from each council member what your hangup is on the SRO. My hangup is?
Yeah.
I don't have a hangup, okay?
Don't have a hangup?
I, it, I guess my two cents, I'm looking at it for the community part of it.
Sure.
We all have kids out there.
Yep.
And I said that earlier that I'm going to be very selfish. I, if we was going to vote on it tonight, who knows which way I'd go, but it will look very promising. But that's my opinion. But I have to respect everybody else's opinion on what we want to do.
Of course.
Up here. I do like the added safety out there. There's huge, huge perks for our community. But I also understand Ash's issues, questions as well. So, but to answer your question, Coach, I don't have a hangup.
I've got no personal hangup with it. I mean, I think the information that Chief Reha provided is on point. It explains all where the money is going and it looks like we would break even. Or if we went with the part-time option, we would actually come out ahead and I think that makes perfect sense. And, you know, I understand where Ash is coming from. We just want to figure out how the money is actually applied in the end. And again, that's a quick conversation with the school that'll determine that. But I think really from my perspective, the only outstanding question now is just how do we reimburse the wear and tear on the vehicle and the gas mileage? It sounds like we've had something in place. We just need to say how that's going to happen going forward, whether it's still the same scenario or, you know, state mileage equivalent reimbursement. But I think it'd be a great program and I'm looking forward to seeing it go forward.
I think this will be a fifteen-minute conversation between Ash and Samantha and it'll be done.
Okay. I'm just curious, that way Dave has more direction, you know, so he knows each one of your hangups, what he needs to get answered and stuff. But I think there was a lot of communication before. I just think if the chief meets with Ash, I think that'd be a five-minute conversation. Like Mr. Doley said, if Ash talks to Samantha or to the school, that'd be a fifteen-minute conversation. Within thirty minutes, it should be a done deal.
I heard during the presentation that this was a reimbursement from the school. So the school's going to write the check to the city and then it just gets funneled through to the police department. So I wanted that to be remembered. I think that's significant. And then she would still be with all the insurance and with all the work comp and all of that stuff would be. I didn't even ask permission if that was it, but I, I think this is such a smaller, easy, easy thing to get accomplished.
If I could just add one little thing too, and I don't mean to keep us here any longer, but I've heard a lot of talk over the last couple of meetings about reach on Facebook and positive outreach and getting people here. And I'm all for that, hundred percent. So please don't take this as I'm against that. I challenge each of you to check out the SRO page, Facebook, and the police department Facebook. We're talking about, I keep hearing the word seventy-two hundred views of videos. We have posts with a hundred thousand views, positive posts. We have posts with twenty thousand views, thirty thousand views that are shining a light on our community every single day. So please don't look at this as just an expense. Look at this as also an investment in your community. I think that that's how the community members see this. And I think if they were to show up to this meeting, you would hear an awful lot of people saying that's how they feel about it. So I just wanted to add that in there. I, I'm not saying either way. I just, I think it's an important point to bring up.
I think tonight was a perfect package. It's a hundred thousand dollars. The school says they're going to pay sixty, seven thousand. Are you willing to pay three thousand? And that was the.
Okay, I do.
I'm going. Bye as well. We'll get the whole row. Mine is just, you know, I, I love numbers. I love those. Those are non-emotion things. But I'm also in a people business. I don't, SROs kind of are in their own little special niche, you know? Sometimes I get some junk from the street like, oh, that's, that's where people go to retire or, I'll ignore them. Or that's, that's where people can't make the street work. Well, I've been in Longhorns for fifteen years. I mean, I worked with biggest county in the state. I worked with Polk County for seven years. I'm here, so I, I think I've got that street. I, I can do that. You know what? Not everyone should be a detective. Not everyone should be a can. Not everyone should be in SRO. You have to want to be there. Kids can smell the mile away if they're not there for the reasons. I'm very passionate about why you should be in SRO and it is not to walk in front of the door with a rifle. I'm in the people business. I'm a relationship builder. My page, which, you know, Dave Redfriss, is full of positivity. But I don't know if you guys truly understand what I really do. What I really do is not on that Facebook page. What I really do is none of those things. The relationship buildings that I start in pre-K, that is laying my foundation for as I go to get the really calls that you don't want to hear about. You don't want to know about, and I'm okay with that. Same reason I do this job is so I don't, so my kids don't have to see those things. And when I say my kids, I mean my kids and I mean my other eight hundred kids. So when I'm, when I get in a call that I've been working on a year, when I, you know, and a kid makes a disclosure and it's bad, that is what I do. When I get a call from a Derek County at one AM waking me up saying, Katie, there's a kid that's distressed. They need to talk to someone, but our deputies aren't the right ones. Will you talk to her? And I talked to her for an hour. And then I start doing check-ins at school and here, that's a, watch out for that kid today. Teachers would have the same stories. But for people that sometimes think, oh, she's reading stories in preschool, that's my foundation building. Oh, she's playing games with this grade, that's my foundation building. Because that is going to get me through the hard years when you get to middle school and high school and beyond. It's the high schoolers right now come up and say, Katie, I know what's going on. Come talk to me. It's a email, hey, I need you to talk to me. That foundation has been taking me years. I just wanted to give you a little glimpse that my Facebook page, I love it, is positive. It is all the good things our students doing. But what I'm there for is when Guthrie County deputy calls me and says, hey, we have a call out. Can we come pick you up at eleven PM? Because there's kids there and I know they, they will be good with you. You want to tell them, come pick me up.
Thank you.
Thirty-three thousand, at least.
It's not even that.
Available, Crystal, you good?
No, I'm good.
I bet you. Reading injured?